Good evening. I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order on May 23rd. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Ms. Carter.
Here.
Ms. Chow.
Here.
Mr. Rikis.
Here.
Ms. Garrison.
Here.
Ms. Quattrucci.
Here. Motion passes seven to zero. Richard, you'll have the approval of the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education amend the agenda for tonight's meeting with the revised order of discussion items. D-65 equity statement, transportation update, Evanston Community School initiative and instructional technology update in that sequence.
Second.
I second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Chow.
Yes.
Mr. Rikis.
Yes.
Ms. Garrison.
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci.
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. We'll begin with our formal presentations from the public. Michellee Patel.
Hello, everybody. I'm here. My name is Michellee Patel. I'm here on behalf of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees, and I have kind of been absent from your meetings this year, but I wanted to give you all a quick update on how the library has been partnering with D-65 and some of the other community organizations as we start to get into the summer and the all-important summer reading program. So I wanted to say that our library director attended last month's Black Student Achievement meeting, and she brought back to our library board that, you know, the board is committed and the library is committed to continue to work with District 65 leadership, teachers, librarians, to support the curriculum and create any out-of-school programs that engage learners and continue to help to close that achievement gap. The library staff has distributed 7,000 copies of the summer reading, which is these pamphlets, so all of you in the audience should be getting these soon, hopefully in your kids' backpacks, and it is available online, and it's quite extensive, and it's in English and in Spanish this year. And the program is, the theme is "Read to Win," and it really is expanded quite a bit with the partnership with Cradle to Career and the Evanston Public Library Friends, and we are, with Dr. Goran's help, last week on a very cold day, he served as the star in a video that is going to help launch a new crowd source fundraising effort to create some more funds to provide books and other materials for the summer reading program. So we want to thank Dr. Goran for doing that, and that should be launched and published soon. I think that first week in June, the summer reading program, registration opens June 1st, and I think during that week is when we're going to launch that fundraising effort. So hopefully, the community will embrace that and help to support the summer reading program. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that ABC Boosters is going to be expanded this summer. I think I saw Laura out in the audience. Yep, there she is. And the library working with District 65 and the Youth Jump Center will help to support the summer program and the rising preschool, you know, age population in terms of the efforts for reading through that, so. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I just wanted to give you that update from the library.
Thank you. That's a great update. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. I'm King Arts PTA.
My name is Julie Wyler, and I am the incoming president of the King Arts PTA, and I'm joined tonight by Jody Ford, the current president, Andrea Manelli, our PTA secretary, Rebecca Langen, and Ellen Lundquist, who are from our King Arts, One King Arts Committee, and of course, Dr. Brown. We would like to thank the District 65 administration and the board, especially our board representative, Candace Chow, and our principal, Jeff Brown, for their engagement and support in our efforts to construct our running track around the King Arts outdoor athletic field. Our PTA, through terrific support of parents and the extended community, raised enough money over the past few years to invest in a significant project that would have lasting and enduring value toward the school. The District 65 administration, Chief Lady Dawn Stevenson and Mary Brown, worked to help us make this project a reality. Our PE department has won a Blue Ribbon Award, and the track will allow them to implement new and innovative programs. It will provide greater opportunities for our students with special needs to truly integrate with their class for physical education and other activities, and it will allow for a wide range of after-school programs to take place, such as Girls on the Run and Girls on Track, and it will provide a place for teachers and parents and the outside community to come together to engage in walking, jogging activities. But besides the track, there are many other great things that are going on at King Arts that we wanted to shed some light on for you and that our community is really proud of. The King Arts PTA spends 30% of its budget each year to support arts programming, and so that there are many opportunities at our school for all students to engage in drum activities, dance, music, and fine arts. We recently installed a student-created mural with a human rights focus in our front lobby, and we had over 100 students participate in the 7th and 8th grade musicals, Xanadu, which I know Dr. Goran came to see. And earlier this year, King Arts was fortunate to win a grant from Illinois Clean Energy Fund to implement four solar panels on the roof at King Arts. It was an $8,000 grant spearheaded by one of our parents, Ethan Chatfield, and the school community celebrated with a solar beration assembly that all K through five students attended. This week, our middle school students will be holding an invention convention, which is a culmination of eight weeks of work designing a solution to solve a real-world problem. Our 6th grade science teacher, Carla Stone, spearheaded this, and we believe it'll be the first of its kind and hopefully a model for the future. We would also like to thank you for the recent designation as community school that the King Arts community learned about this past Friday. While there's still much to be learned and a lot of planning that needs to happen, we are excited and supportive of what this means for the entire King Arts community, especially the students, and the PTA looks forward to collaborating on this important initiative. Now you're going to hear from Rebecca Langen and Ellen Lundquist, our One King Arts Committee chair, who have been leading a really important diversity and inclusion initiative at our school.
Good evening. Thank you for this chance to address the board and administration. My name is Ellen Lundquist, and I live at 1020 Main Street.
I'm Rebecca Langen, and I reside at 139 Dewey, and I have three children at King Arts. We're here for a few reasons. First, we'd like to briefly talk about the evolution of our advocacy work at King Arts. Second, we want to recognize and acknowledge the support and financing that has gone into our committee. And finally, we'd like to outline some of our next steps. One King Arts. Tonight, Ellen and I represent a working group of over 25 parents and teachers. Together, we believe that if we're serious about building our community, we really have to find new and creative ways to honor every voice. We feel like we have to do this now. This year, we've moved away from the name "diversity and inclusion," having now adopted the title "One King Arts." We are grassroots, we're passionate, and we want to grow student success by honoring our diversity, inclusion, and learning needs. The work. About a year ago, we set out to learn how we could actively, consistently create a space at King where every voice in our school community could be welcomed and heard. Could we better understand the existing barriers? And if so, could we actually do something about them? Ultimately, we really wanted to find ways to unite around student success and the whole child. We began meeting, focusing our time on the places and relationships within our school where we found untapped talent. We met with Biz Lindsay Ryan, OPAL, surrounding school leaders, case, and we heard from community voices. Fast forward, and we have now organized ourselves around our collective appetite for systemic change. Our gratitude. We've learned that doing the work of listening, reaching out, thinking outside the box, taking action, this all requires constant course correction, and we want to thank all of those who have joined us. We want to express our deep thanks to the King Arts PTA for their willingness to support this long-term vision and allow us the autonomy to broaden our reach and engage our community in new and creative ways. Not surprising, this work has opened the door for more complicated conversations around our PTA structure, roles, and communication. All that said, we're immensely grateful to be pursuing a more inclusive climate in concrete, visible ways. We'd also like to publicly thank Candace. Candace, your ready response and genuine interest has been greatly appreciated. Moving ahead, we do plan to stay committed to our building, as the building needs directly impact the social, emotional, and physical landscape for all of our students, and more importantly, for our most vulnerable. Finally, we'd like to thank Dawn Ravine at YOU for partnering with us, supporting our students, and sharing our passion. We are so thrilled about the expansion. As YOU becomes more fully engaged in our school fabric, we look forward to supporting the onboarding in whatever ways make sense. We are so ecstatic. Thank you to everyone who felt that King Arts has what it takes to make for an amazing community school. Ellen.
So the bigger picture. As the district expands its climate teams and puts the equity statement to work, we'd like the chance to stay in more constant contact. What we've already seen at King Arts at baseline is a shift of energy and engagement. As we begin to move, the experience of small things shifting leads to greater energy and greater hope for change. I'm going to ask you to sit for a second for just one example of some of the things that have happened this year. In a meeting earlier this year, someone raised that incoming students and families, particularly those who were transferring into the middle school, had a tough time finding their place in a social system that was pretty developed already. As the conversation flowed between our group, the PTA, teachers, students, administration, and other staff, an idea about how to welcome these students and every family turned into a welcome-back-to-school event, where teachers have now committed to calling every family with a personal invitation to attend. Our athletics department is organizing community games. Our custodian is grilling 1,000 hot dogs. A teacher and a parent are serving as DJ, and students are putting together welcome-bags with school swag and flyers that they're going to come up with about things you need to know about our school. We're not asking that you focus on our great party, but what the party means. It takes a lot of energy and hope to get behind something that takes so much work. It takes believing in the changes that are happening, and more than that, believing that they can happen and that they matter, that each person in this community can contribute to being part of the difference that makes a difference. While we plan to stay laser-focused on our King Arts community, we'd also like to think about collaborating around these pieces more effectively with the district. We'd like to create more opportunities to partner at this grassroots level, keeping student success for every voice our shared highest priority. In the meantime, you are officially invited to our party. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much. Jeremy Wilson.
My name is Jeremy R. Wilson. I live at 815 Central Street. I have lived in the Orington District for more than 50 years. In three minutes, I would like to present an eight-point plan to overcome the Black Student lack of readiness for kindergarten problems. First, a rhetorical question. When is a District 65 parent now made aware of what will constitute foundational literary skills when the child is five years old? Based upon the failure of the district's preschool program, age three is too late. Following the district motto, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes," I propose. One, approximately 750 white children, 180 black children, and 80 Hispanic children are born to Evanston parents annually. The superintendent will meet with the presidents of Evanston and St. Francis Hospitals and assure that every Evanston mother is taught, prior to leaving the hospital, that she or a family member must read to the infant with the TV off, beginning tonight and every night for 20 minutes a night, in English or Spanish, until they begin kindergarten. They will be told to talk to their infants. Each mother will be given an appropriate children's book. Each mother will be asked if she has a library card or encouraged to obtain one and be given information as to how to obtain one. Two, the superintendent will meet with and correspond with all Evanston obstetricians and pediatricians, citing contemporary research, and asking them to treat the development of an infant's intellect as important as an infant's body, and enlisting them in teaching parents the importance of reading to their children, playing number games, and the like. Three, the district will create an inventory of all children born and/or living in Evanston under the age of five and provide to their parents by September 1 each year a simple brochure that states the minimum expectations of what their child should be able to do by age five, including sitting still for 20 minutes while being read to. Four, in the next, in the first six months of life, a District 65 staff member will visit the home of each infant, present the family with a children's book, and explain how important it is that the child learn to listen to someone read with the TV off and to learn to sit still while someone is reading, preferably on the lap of the parent. When age appropriate, they will encourage the family to play number games, learn the alphabet, et cetera. Five, the superintendent will meet with the pastors of the Evanston Black Churches, including at a minimum Ebenezer AME, Springfield Baptist, Second Baptist, Mount Zion Baptist, St. Mary's and St. Nicholas, and discuss the problem of lack of readiness for school and the need for their help in urging their parishioners to read to their children and to play number games with their children. Yes, young mothers do not go to church, but the grandmothers-
Thank you very much.
-who are a major factor in Evanston do go. Pastors should be asked to make this a topic in their parishes at least twice a year. Six, a letter will be sent to each parent every six months, asking them whether they are reading to their child nightly and asking them whether the child can meet certain criteria, i.e. can the child point to the baby in the picture, can the child point to the house in the picture, appropriate to the age of the child. Seven, beginning in fall 2017, when children are tested for readiness for kindergarten, the scores will be grouped by race, daycare center, and program, and the average score for each program having more than one child enrolling shall be made public. Yes, you will get phone calls.
I think we've run out of time.
The superintendent's contract will not be extended beyond 2021. The contract will be reviewed based on the average readiness score of all Black, Brown children enrolling in the district in that year.
I'm sorry, we've run out of time.
My three minutes are up.
Yes.
Every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Jean Hussein.
Spring flowers bring allergies for me, so I'm hoping that this is enough. Thank you for this time. I am Jean Hussein. I'm one of the coordinators of the Haven Tutoring Network at Haven Middle School. And as you can see, there's a few of us here, just because there's a lot of good things going on at Haven, and so we all ended up wanting to come and talk about some of those things going on. But I also want to set a context for the Haven Tutoring Network, which has been around at Haven for 11 years now, and there are actually three coordinators. Two of us are here. We've been working with it for all of that time. We work closely with the administration at Haven and very closely with the teachers, as well as, of course, the students. So we work every year to recruit volunteer tutors from among the Haven community. Not everybody still has children at Haven. In fact, none of the coordinators have children at Haven anymore. And we recruit anywhere from 15 to 25 tutors a year, just to volunteer their time, which may add up to anywhere from, you know, 30 to 40 hours a week of tutoring time working with the students at Haven. The teachers identify the students who need the help or how they want the help, and our volunteers go into the classroom and help people, and we may work with, at one point, everybody in the class or just a selection of some of the students, or some of the tutors work one-on-one or one-on-two or small groups with the students at Haven. Often with students who are struggling, also with students who are just getting behind, or sometimes, you know, students who need some enrichment attention as well. The classroom assistance comes in the form of visiting with or working with the core subject teachers, as well as something that, there's a class at Haven called the Academic Support Classes, which is a, you know, a guided study hall type of thing on the surface where it starts that way. It's extra time for students who are not taking a foreign language to focus on academics, but we'll revisit that in a little bit. And then next year, the Tutoring Network is about to launch a new program called Breakfast Club, which we are piloting twice a week, and we will be bringing in, because it's a pilot, 30 students who come in twice a week, again, because it's a pilot, and then we will have volunteer tutors coming in for that, as well as expecting that staff are going to want to be involved with that, and students will come in early, get a healthy breakfast, probably go off to some of the teacher's study halls to get some work done, go to the library to get some reading done, and then also get themselves organized for a day of school, which they will be able to start on time. The keystone element to any progress that we make when the tutors work with the students at Haven, is that three minutes? Jerry said I could take one of her minutes. All right, I'll summarize the rest. The keystone elements really come with the relationship that the students have with the students and the tutors, but also the teamwork that comes from the tutors working with the teachers and the administration and the social workers and the resource teachers. And that has built a program that has gained the trust of the community, as well as the teachers, and, you know, 11 years of sustained support to the students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Dyer.
I am the other coordinator for the Haven Tutoring Network, and I've come to talk to you about a wonderful opportunity I had this year to work with Tiffany Chapman and her support class. Whenever I went, I thought of the "every child, every day, whatever it takes" was the motto. It was the essence of Tiffany Chapman's class this year. Tiffany's design of this support class took in account the needs of each student. From games to enrichment, the students knew from the first day that things were different this year. They're part of a program in which they would be a conduit for their work and participation. The students were encouraged to advocate for themselves, ask for help, attend before and after-school study halls, and of course, Saturday school. I felt this format was working to take away the stigma of asking for help, showing your soft underbelly, not being afraid to ask, "I don't get it, I don't understand." I think the job of schools is not only to educate students, but also to help them develop the tools they need to be successful students. Middle school is a tricky time for young people. If they don't feel successful or good about school, they often give up on themselves as students. With Tiffany, those students knew from the start she was in their corner and she cared. There's much talk about closing the achievement gap. I think the support class model at Haven this year has been a great hands-on approach to addressing this issue. Recently, one of the students told Ms. Chapman that he'd been passing all his classes this year since he'd been in her support class. That speaks volumes for the learning environment Tiffany has created. It's my hope that this group of at-risk students will take their achievements to heart and start ETHS with confidence that I can be a successful student and will access the resources necessary to support their learning and development through their high school years. When looking at a budget, support class can often be looked at as a line item, perhaps being staffed by whoever has a free period. I think it needs to be looked at in a different way. After spending a year in Tiffany's class, I think she has changed the culture of support class and made it a place of enriched learning, growing, and support of at-risk students. I would encourage you to continue to fund Tiffany's position as the 8th grade support student, support teacher for the 2016, '17 school year and beyond. Every child, each day, whatever it takes. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Tiffany Chapman.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, now I get it. That strategy makes so much sense now. Ali. Ms. Chapman, I felt so smart completing my post-test. I felt so proud of myself because I realized I actually know this stuff. Chantel. Ms. Chapman, I wrote about you in my 8th grade graduation speech, because if I wasn't in this class, if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't have passed 8th grade this year. My name is Tiffany Chapman, and those are just but a few quotes from my students in the Algebra Enrichment Course that we offered this academic year at Haven, for students whose test data paints a picture of students that have always struggled with mathematics. The vision behind the Algebra Enrichment Course was to provide support and time so that students would have a stronger chance of comprehending the algebraic content. From day one in my Algebra Enrichment class, I worked to create a culture where everyone felt respected and safe to try even the new and challenging concepts. I built a nurturing climate where each student not only thinks, but knows without a doubt that I care about them and about their success in school. When it comes to the academics, expanding algebraic knowledge was truly the goal. Three days a week, I teach algebraic lessons to mirror what's going on in the regular algebra class. I have seen strides beyond what anyone could have expected, especially with a brand-new pilot program. The growth is obvious in the math data. We had an average growth of over 10 percentage points. It's also obvious in their post-test, but most importantly, in the confidence exhibited by the students. As a result of such great growth, a number of my students, who of course started off struggling and very low with the content, are now going on to ETHS, taking a geometry class in their freshman year at ETHS. In addition to working to improve each student's comprehension of basic algebraic concepts, I also work to help improve and maintain the grades in each of their core classes. To promote success, I met with each student weekly to discuss grades and any necessary plans in order to improve any struggling grades. If students were failing one class, they were required to come in for lunchtime study halls twice a week. If they were failing more than one class, they were required to come in three times a week. While gaining the student buy-in plays a huge role in how successful a program like this can be, I realized early on that the parent buy-in and support was equally necessary. I would send emails to inform parents of required lunchtime study halls, to inform them of upcoming Saturday schools, and just to share grades and moments of success. For those parents that didn't use email, was never afraid to pick up the phone. While our program has been very successful this year, I'm standing here not to boast, because that wouldn't be my style. I'm standing here because such a program like this to wrap around our students is just that valuable, and I want to make sure that we give them all that we can. Thank you.
Hi, I was just back for minutes. I'm Jerry Hoppy, and I'm the social worker. I felt very honored, this is the second time Tiffany and I have done a support class together. There is a social, emotional piece we do every single week. We did a sharing circle, we got to know each other. I even had one of her students teach me math, taught me a lesson, and that was really exciting. I'm a very smart woman, but I don't remember some of those math. What did she teach me? I'm just going to tell you. Simplifying radical, what was it? Yes, I don't remember it anymore because I'm not sure what we do with it, but she did. She came in my room and she taught it to me. It is the most amazing experience I've had, and these kids are very, this was a total wraparound program. So thank you. I'm just here for extra minutes, but thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, just for a second. I used to teach at Haven. I know Tiffany Chapman. I just want to say that in addition to all those things that she talked about, she was always a teacher I could go to with, I was having trouble with a student, perhaps of a different race than my own, and say, I'd say, "Tiffany, what do I do?" And she would say, "I'll take care of that for you," or, you know, she'd vouch for me with family members. She helped me make connections with students who were rather resistant to making connections with me so that we could have a good educational experience, and that support class is just what we need more of. Sorry.
No problem.
And that doesn't go against your three minutes at all.
No. Thank you.
Good evening, District 65 School Board, and good evening, Evanston Community. I'm Roger Williams. I'm on the board of OPAL, or the Organization of Positive Action and Leadership, and what I'm going to address is the draft- And what I'm going to address is the Draft 65 Educational and Racial Equity Statement. And I'm concerned that the Equity Leadership Team, which was mentioned in the letter, I'm concerned that the Equity Leadership Team in process will not be effective in working toward closing the achievement gap. If District 65 is serious about attacking the achievement gap that exists between black, brown, and white students, then the Equity Leadership Team, the Equity Consultant, and others will need to be guided and led by a third-party organization that will enable District 65 to do a deep dive into its own institutional practices and policies that have historically perpetuated achievement disparities based on race. Anything less than this simply treats the symptoms rather than the cause of the ongoing injustice to black and brown students. Furthermore, without the commissioning of a third-party organization to lead the racial equity process, the Equity Statement and the Equity Policy will be rendered worthless. It may look reasonable on paper, but I believe it will fail in its outcomes. Any questions?
We'll be discussing the Equity Statement later on in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we're on to the Phyllis Ganser PTA Volunteer of the Year Award, which is always one of the most celebratory meetings of the year. And I'd like to welcome... Ms. Ganser to the podium.
I'm using papers, so I hope I can keep track of it on this podium. I'm Sue Ganser Levinson. This is the rest of the committee. Miriam, Heidi, Laura, Laura Corky, Donna Lee, and Steph. Together, we figure out the best we can with the help of the community, the Outstanding PTA Volunteer of the Year. It's my privilege to present the award, and it's always really difficult to come up with a single person. In fact, this year, we had to narrow it to two, and even that's quite difficult. The award was created during the 1999-2000 school year to recognize Phyllis Ganser, an active and enthusiastic volunteer with PTA and PTA Council. Phyllis, the mother of three children in the Evanston Skokie Schools at that time, had been diagnosed with breast cancer in December of 1997. She had periods of remission during which she pursued her activities in the community, including being co-president of the Walker PTA. Unfortunately, the disease was metastatic, and she lost her battle with cancer in January of 2000. At the time, her son David was a freshman at ETHS. He is now a computer consultant with a management consulting firm in Portland, Oregon. Her daughter Jessie was in fifth grade at Walker School, and her son Adam was in first grade at Walker. Jessie recently graduated from Port Louis College in Colorado and is a community health worker. Adam, a 2015 graduate of Hamilton College in New York State, is employed as a software developer by Epic in Madison, Wisconsin. Phyllis's death was stunning to many of us. As one of her older sisters with children close in age, Phyllis and I spent uncountable hours together, many of them in PTA-related activities, particularly PTA Council. As a resident of the Skokie constituency that makes up part of District 65 and 202, Phyllis was always adamant that the PTA Council be known as the Evanston-Skokie Council of PTAs, which the districts are too, actually. Over the years, ETHS has disbanded its PTSA, and since then, the award has considered only the District 65 schools. It's my honor and privilege to be part of the committee that solicits nominations for the award, reads the wonderful recommendations for always more-than-worthy nominees, and to participate in the very hard selection of one, or occasionally, as this year, two award recipients. And I'd like to say that on my way here, I heard part of an interview with somebody from the Gates Foundation who said, I believe, I wanted to hold on to it because I thought it was so appropriate, talking about the Gates Foundation, she said that the passion, the commitment, oh, the talent and the power was what the Gates Foundation has. And while they have more money than we do, they don't have anything over our PTA volunteers. There are four criteria for the nominees: to be a member in good standing of the PTA, to be committed to the PTA goal of promoting the welfare of all schoolchildren, a spirit and enthusiasm for volunteer work, and a demonstrated ability to engage and involve other volunteers. Because all the nominees are so exceptional, I'd like to say a few words about each of them, not just about the recipients this year. And if you're present, would you stand up? We do have certificates for each of the nominees. Miriam. Who is the mother of King Eric's students, is also a member of our committee, and therefore ineligible. But she was recognized as a nominee, and I was saying a few minutes later, Kristin, the recognition is very important. She's held numerous PTA positions. Her nominator says she's been a passionate member of our school community since she arrived five years ago. Her involvement has been enthusiastic, organized, and committed. Miriam feels strongly that volunteering is important for the volunteer, the child, and the community. The next name, I'm not sure of the pronunciation. I think it's Johanna Fraga. Are you here, Johanna? She's a member of the Washington School Community. She has a first grader there. She's originally from Cuba, and she recognizes how culture impacts a child's life and influences a family's experience in a school community. The nominator cites numerous ways in which Johanna has volunteered at Washington, but specifically in recognizing a need for more advocacy for Spanish-speaking families. She created a Spanish club with other parents as volunteers. She began partnering with teachers to discuss issues unique to Latino families, and eventually, with a two-way immersion teacher, began formulating ideas to create a forum where Latino families could feel comfortable sharing their ideas and concerns, a place where they could fully engage in meaningful community. The resulting Association of Hispanic Families is now a branch of the PTA. A little while ago, we heard from Rebecca Langen, who is one of our nominees, and I found out that some of what I have in here, Rebecca, is inaccurate, but I'm going to go ahead with it anyway. According to her nominator, Rebecca joined the King Eric's community three years ago and, quote, "immediately jumped in feet-first," close quote. She has spearheaded the creation of the King Eric's Diversity and Inclusion Group, which we just heard is no longer called that, and called...
One King Arx.
One King Arx. One of the projects is to create gender-neutral bathrooms, which we all know has been a really hot topic in the news lately. She's demonstrated over and over that she will do any task necessary to get a job done. She's willing to do whatever is necessary to promote the community. She has a supportive, helpful attitude, and an encouraging word for all. She's been able to involve parents and teachers. Heidi Locke? Heidi? During Heidi's nine years as a Haven Middle School parent, she has shown remarkable leadership and a tireless volunteer spirit. That was a quote. Among numerous other activities, Heidi has produced "Haven Help Us," the Student Variety Show. Apparently, she's done that for nine years, and these are middle school kids, so that takes... In 2016, 250 current Haven Middle School students performed and helped behind the scenes. It's apparent from the detailed nomination that this sounds like a monumental undertaking that has allowed a variety of talents to shine through due to Heidi's efforts. She's done other things as well, but doing anything for nine years, I think deserves recognition. Jerry Smith. Jerry here? Does not, okay. Jerry has worked tirelessly and creatively to bring the arts and enrichment opportunities to every student at Oakton School. She was an integral part of the Artist in Residence Program at Oakton, including undertaking fundraising to make it happen. Each and every student got the opportunity to participate in the program at some point during their time at Oakton. Jerry has always been one of the, quote, "go-to," close quote, volunteers. She has done everything from leading major programs to jumping in at the last minute to provide extra help. Through her efforts, she has helped provide memorable and enriching experiences for countless students at Oakton and Shute. Liz Webster. Liz there? Liz? This nominator said, "Liz is the embodiment of the philosophy, 'Every child, every day, whatever it takes.'" Liz took the initiative to write a parent's survival guide to help explain the ABCs of Dewey to new families. She's always thinking of ways to make Dewey and school events as inclusive as possible for the school's diverse community. Liz has been involved in the Dewey Edible Garden, working with the classroom teachers to help integrate a love of nature with the curriculum. Liz has worked on bringing restorative justice and talking circles programs to the school. Liz thrives on being involved and helping out. As I said earlier this year, we're giving the award to two parents, and they are both Dawes' parents and have worked together quite extensively, I understand. Kristin James and Elliot Progsteiner-Pell. Would you come up, please? Each of our recipients received two nominations this year, and there are just wonderful things said about them. I'll read a few of them, but I'm trying to synthesize it. Kristin is a fierce guardian of tradition, yet she always encourages new ideas, which I think is a tremendous talent, new ideas whether from another parent, a student, or a staff member. When she had children in two and then three schools, her commitment and participation never wavered. And by the way, the same comment was made by Laura. So I'm actually going to go to the nominations and just read a few things that were said about Kristin and Elliot. Kristin is not only bright, selfless, and hard-working, but she has the charm and diplomacy to work with all different kinds of people. As PTA co-president at Dawes, Kristin understood that certain groups of parents were something not connected with the work of the PTA. She took it upon herself to be present at various events on the sidelines, sometimes drop-off pickup, as a way to connect regularly with a more diverse group of parents than had historically been involved in PTA. She also ensured that every PTA meeting had Spanish interpreters, so parents with limited English proficiency could feel welcome and involved. Kristin always looks for ways to bring about more collaboration and communication between all stakeholders in an effort to improve results and relationships. I think you probably get the general attention that she's a stellar person and a stellar volunteer. And equally wonderful things were said about Elliot. His organization, attention to detail, know-how, thoroughness, and spirit are inspirational. His dedication and service to the kids, and each of them has a child finishing up at Dawes, each of them has three children, so they've been involved in the Dawes PTA for many years. So his dedication and service to the kids, school, and community will be missed. Most important, he has an excellent view of the needs for inclusivity of the entire community. He brings a historical and community-wide perspective and always encourages new ideas. He has a particular commitment to fostering inclusivity in the community. An example, I thought this was really wonderful, an example of Elliot's commitment to promoting the welfare of all schoolchildren has been his leadership of the Boys and Men Book Club. He was a founding member of the group formerly called the Father-Son Book Club, and has led it for many years. The name changed from Father-Son to Boys-to-Men in an effort to recognize that not all children can structure a father-son, but could know they were also invited and included with a little flexibility. And this too goes on saying just stellar things about Elliot. Thank you for not limiting me to three minutes, but if I had more time, I could tell you really great things about these people. I will also tell you that Donna Lee, Bonaparte Community Member, was a winner of this award, and she was a Dawes parent at the time. And I'm a Dawes alum, not having started kindergarten the year the school opened. In my mind, the sun is always shining for the K through six at that time that I was a student at Dawes. Congratulations. I think that this is well-deserved among a group of excellent, excellent nominees at Dawes.
Thank you all. So I think I speak for both of us when I want to say a shout-out to all the working parents who still have here, to the PTAs, to all the dads who are sometimes a distinct minority in the PTA world, and keep doing it. And a shout-out also to all the professionals who help us teach and raise our children, because that's what you all do. Those who come in from the maternity leave, who present to the board of education.
Now, I should say in the earlier score, I'm a family. I'm much more comfortable on the giving end, so I'd much rather be here tonight giving this to somebody, but I'm willing to receive it only on behalf of all the other wonderful parents, teachers, and administrators who I've had the honor of collaborating with over the last twelve, thirteen years of being at District 65 and 202. And it's really on behalf of partnering the parents before me, some are here tonight, the parents who stand next to me, and the parents who follow behind me, in the collaboration and work for our Evanston community. So I feel honored to be a part of the community, and thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. And having seen Kristin and Elliot work all these years, I know how well-deserved this award truly is. We're on to board and district communications.
Let me start. Let me also offer my congratulations to all the parents and family members who are participating in the PTA. As we say over and over again, we can't do this work by ourselves, and we are so grateful for the work. We're going to continue the Dawes Fest, because as part of our regular meeting, we like to take the opportunity to highlight some of the great work being done in our schools. And I'd like to invite Hillary Linden, who's the PE teacher at Dawes, to share some information with us about the Kid Power with us about the Kid Power Program. The program's been a huge success at Dawes this spring and helps to promote fitness and global citizenship among elementary school students. Dawes was the only non-Chicago-based school to participate in the program from Illinois, and I welcome Ms. Linden to say a few words.
Hi, thank you very much. Yes, I'm Hillary Linden. I'm the physical education teacher at Dawes Elementary School. And I'm excited to speak today about UNICEF Kid Power. When I first heard about Kid Power a year ago, it was just starting out in Seattle, and right away I knew it was a program that if given the opportunity, I'd like to bring it to Dawes. Kid Power is just what it looks like. It's the first-ever wearable-for-good fitness device. So when I applied for it, I wasn't sure if we were going to get it because they were running it for the Chicago schools only, and then we were lucky to find out that we were the only school chosen outside of the city of Chicago to participate this year, in its first year. So all of our third, fourth, and fifth graders received their very own Kid Power UNICEF band to keep. And so like similar bands, like a Fitbit band, you know it tracks your steps and lets you know what you're doing. But this one, the students know, has superpowers. It not only tracks your steps, but it saves lives. So by students getting active and working out and exercising, they were able to earn points, and those points earned them therapeutic food packets that were sent to students in other countries who were starving, in Haiti and Uganda. And as this went on, students were able to participate in lessons in both their PE classroom and in their classroom with their teachers. So like I said, and Dr. Goran said, we are the only school outside of Chicago that was able to participate this year. We had a total of 214 students and staff that received bands and worked towards saving lives. Within the month, the Kid Power Month, which went from the end of February to the beginning, to the end of March, our students and staff walked over 18,000 miles. They're still participating right now, and they've walked over 26,000 miles. So they've earned over 2,000 food packets for starving children. And as of today, they've earned over 3,000 because they're still working hard towards this. We had nine classes, which were teams that participated in it this year, and of those nine teams, all the teams finished in the top 15 out of over 200 schools that participated. So cool. Not only did the Kid Power get the kids active and eager to move around more, but it also taught them more about global citizenship. Each student received a passport, and with the help of the teachers who did a phenomenal job in the classroom teaching these lessons, students not only learned about different countries in PE, but they learned about it in their classroom. So they earned points and stickers in their passport as they used their UNICEF Kid Power. It was great to see the motivation on the students. I would have students come up, and parents email me how they would get up early in the morning to play basketball in their gym, sorry, in their basement, so that they could save more lives, or they'd go on an extra walk with their family so that they could save more lives. And the same went for the teachers as well. Teachers would come up to me in the hallway and say, "Look, I got 10,000 steps today." So it was really exciting and really great for our Dawes community to participate in this program. I just encourage you to visit the UNICEF Kid Power website. We're hopeful and eager that, again, we're going to try to participate this upcoming year as well. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hillary, don't wait. We have a little something for, just to give you, to tell you how much we appreciate it. And indeed, the one bullet you missed from your presentation is that Kid Power is generated by teacher power, and you did such a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I have a few more announcements, if I may, before we proceed. A couple of things that I just want to highlight over the last couple of weeks. On May 14th, we participated along with a wide range of community partners and the Evansthem group in the Fifth Ward STEM Fest. This was a collaboration between Evansthem, which includes both school districts and a wide range of community partners, Family Focus and the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, to host a STEM festival for Fifth Ward families. The event was a spectacular success, and was helped to inspire and engage our youth in pursuing STEM careers. There were interactive activities, sessions throughout the day, challenges for kids, and a Grand Prix event where middle school students raced electric cars that they had built early in the day. I want to make a special thank you to Family Focus, Fleetwood, and all the participating STEM providers, including Northwestern University, for making this such a great day for our community. I'd also like to thank the Chessmen of the North Shore and the North Shore Chapter of Lynx Inc. for volunteering and helping to plan the event, and Evansthem, which is led by Kirby Callum, who's been a District 65 teacher, took a lot of time and effort to build this collaboration, and we're just very proud of what we saw. Yes, indeed, I did see Xanadu. It was spectacular at King Arts in my continual way of going to the theater, not in New York, but in Evanston and Skokie. And I want to say thank you to all the talented musicians, singers, and actors from our fine arts school, and indeed the faculty and staff who supported that. I'd like to recognize the families and the staff and the parents and the community members who came out to our Parent Advisory Committee meetings last week on Latino and Black Student Achievement. We had a little over 100 people show up between the two sessions that had a very rich and engaging conversation. It's the type of dialogue and feedback that's extremely helpful as we do our work to address the opportunity gaps and the achievement gaps here in the district. And it's important that we continue to recognize and to listen to the concerns of families and highlight the strengths of all of our students. Many of us were out on a beautiful Saturday day at the Yay Festival, and again, we don't need Chicago and we don't need art fairs in Chicago because we had our own, school by school across the district, along with our colleagues at 202 and several private schools, displaying such wonderful work, again, generated by our students and with the great support of our teachers, and it was just absolutely spectacular. And finally, I want to tip a hat and give a special thank you to the Chicago Bears. The chairman of the Bears, Mr. George McCaskey, who lived in Evanston probably 25 or 30 years ago, called us through the United Way and said, "I'd like to come read to kids." And so he came to Oakton on Friday, and his plan was to stay in one or two classrooms, and I think he went to four or five classrooms, thoroughly engaged with the kids, read such fantastic books, and then took a lot of questions about the Chicago Bears, their quarterback, their coaching, et cetera, et cetera. But our hats off to United Way for helping to coordinate that, and to Mr. McCaskey, he really rolled his sleeves up and gave both the kids and the teachers and the administration at Oakton just a great throw. That's my report.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Any other comments? More comments? No? Okay, we're on to consent agenda, Claudia.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how to amend this.
As amended, yeah.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion with the exception of budget amendments and the gift acceptance, which I'd like to be discussed separately, and approve personnel appointments, leaves-of-absence separations, April 2016 Board of Education and Finance Committee meeting minutes, April 2014 destruction of closed session audio recording, March 2016 list of bills and school treasures report, technology purchasing, treasures bond renewal, FY17 food and nutrition services fees, FY17 food service satellite meals program contract, and housekeeping bids.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero.
Now the gift acceptance.
Yeah, I just was curious about, I see that the Washington's PTA has raised $30,000 for the kindergarten playground refurbishment, and I just wondered if we could be a little bit more specific, what they're going to do to it.
Mary, can you open that?
The items to be purchased are outlined on page 55 of the board packet. Basically, they're providing new equipment for, I believe this is the kindergarten area, and they've been working with our building and grounds department. We will be using our staff to remove the wooden equipment that's quite aged there, and these items were picked out by the PTA with the approval of the principal, and we're excited about having them have updated equipment. Very excited.
I just wanted to sort of highlight it because I think it's a very, there was a lot of work involved in raising those funds, and it's going to be a wonderful new environment for the kindergartners when they come back. So I guess I make a motion that we accept these two gifts from King Arts and Washington School.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero.
And then the second thing, this was more of a, almost a procedural thing on these budget amendments, where we have, and it's more than this, but, Mary, this might be to you, $77,000 of moving funds around. It occurred to me that $77,000 is a teacher, you know, could be. And I just wondered, do we have, like, it's typical in a very large budget like ours that we would have expenses that are budgeted for one thing and then don't, again, they're not used, and then they get transferred somewhere else. But do we have any policies around, like, is there an upper limit that we wouldn't do this, or when it has to be flagged to our attention? Or is there not?
I can tell you, the past history is that anything exceeding a $5,000 amount is written about, as we did on page 50 of the board packet. So there's more detail provided about those moves, but we always provide all of the backup, as you see between pages 51 and 53. And occasionally, we do have needs in one area, a supply account may have some money, but we find we need it in the equipment account. If the cost of an item is $500 or more, it's considered equipment. If we can get it for $499.99, it's technically considered a supply. So we budget money as best we believe where it needs to be for spending, and these amendments are all within the budget, so we're not exceeding our total budget. But we do bring these to the board for approval when we need to move it in between specific accounts in the funds.
Okay. Because I guess I found for me that designations like other, something's going from heating equipment supplies to other purchase services, I have no idea what those services are.
We're happy to provide details on any specific move here, and I can get back to you on what that.
Because I think that as we move into more uncertain economic times, difficult economic times, that we should really pay attention to this wherever we can, where we're looking for money wherever we can, to know what we're spending our money on.
I can tell you the specific. I don't know the exact company, but we had a heating repair that was needed in the district, and so we moved money from our gas account line that luckily had an overage because we've had very mild winter, and the price of heating has thankfully gone down as well. But we did have a need to repair some heating equipment. So I don't know the specific company name, I could get back to you with that, but it was for that purpose.
That's the kind of detail, but yeah, I was wishing I had, but still, thank you. All right, then I move that we approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero. We are now on to the school board officer election.
Homer?
I move that the Board of Education appoint Paul Goran as the president pro temp until the president is elected.
Second.
I second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. So, I can grab that for the gap. Only Ms. Chow has submitted a letter of interest in serving as president of the District 65 School Board. Are there any nominations, including self-nominations, for this position? Since I hear none, may we have a vote to elect Ms. Chow as board president for the duration of one year.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rikus? Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero.
Tracy was really hurrying out of that chair, wasn't she? Okay, I have a couple comments, very brief, because my husband apparently needs to get somewhere. He's been looking at his watch for the last half hour back there. No, just kidding, shout-out to him. It actually is really an honor to be able to serve the board and our community in this role. I've been privileged to work with this board, and I would consider it a very high-performing board. I've served on other boards in different capacities, and I've constantly been in awe of the way this board works together, regardless if we come at an issue from a different perspective, but the thoughtfulness, the discernment, the care that the board gives to the issues before us is truly inspirational. And I've learned so much in the last three years from all of you and the administration that we have the honor to work with, and particularly from Tracy and the way she leads with such grace and gravitas and openness. And so I don't know that I will do it as well as she, but I will do my best, and we'll need help from everyone to make that happen. And I'm very excited that I will be continuing to lead with Richard as our vice president to keep me straight and narrow when I like to maybe go off script sometimes. So I thank you all, and I'm really looking forward to the work we're going to do together. We have a lot of challenges before us, but I think we have great focus and unwavering commitment to the children in our district, and just such a plethora of talent in our administrators and our teachers and our parents to do this along with us.
I just want to add to that because I feel incredibly privileged to have two such capable, smart, committed, thoughtful female leaders of our school board, going from Tracy, who has served us for three years, and really sacrificed a lot to serve in the role in ways that people don't always see at televised meetings, and to pass the baton to someone equally capable in Candace. I just think we're really, really fortunate to have that in our district, and I just wanted to say that. So thank you both for what you have done over the last seven years, but in particular the last three, and Candace, for however long you served.
And a shout-out to my family at the back, who did begrudgingly come. Thank you very much for being part of this and for the sacrifices you will continue to endure. Okay, with that, let's move on. Regarding our vice president, only Mr. Rikus has committed, submitted a letter of interest in serving as the vice president of the District 65 School Board. Are there any other nominations, including self-nominations, for this position? Okay, if none, may we have a vote to elect Mr. Rikus as vice president for the period of one year. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, school treasurer? Yes?
Yes.
So I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation to reappoint Dr. Mary Brown, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and School Treasurer, CSBO, as the District 65 School Treasurer for the 2016/17 school year, to take effect July 1, 2016.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes.
She's all right.
Oh, I had a, are we supposed to let secretary?
I'm sorry?
Secretary was in the agenda or not?
I was elected till two thousand seventeen at the reorganization meeting last year.
Okay, thank you.
It's a two-year term.
It was just on the agenda, so I didn't know they'd gotten left off.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the two thousand sixteen-seventeen board meeting calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we can have some discussion regarding this. The calendar has been prepared by Adila with some input, and it's outlined in your packet. Are there particular questions or comments? Jennifer, did you want to start?
So I have a comment that may not affect our vote tonight, but I thought I'd throw it out. I thought last year, before I joined the board, an important decision was made to reduce the number of meetings. So there was a reduction in the number of working meetings from the previous year to this year. And I think for this, for twenty sixteen-seventeen, it may not be a possibility, but I think going forward, it may be worth looking at whether there are some redundancies and whether or not we can think about reducing the number of meetings even further. One of the reasons for that is that there's a lot of preparation work that goes on behind the scenes on the administration's part between these meetings. And there's a lot of preparation on our end over weekends to get ready. So I think especially between finance meetings when we're discussing something, and we're all, almost always all present as a full board, you know, thinking about some of the efficiencies that we might be able to look at. I'm not proposing any changes necessarily for this year. There's a lot on our plate, but I'm requesting that we take a look at that as a board and as an administration for the future.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we also will be going into planning for the coming year as we talk about agenda items and thinking about how we fill out, you know, these meetings. It's certainly plausible that we might be able to cancel a meeting if we don't have, if we don't have agenda for that, even though we've stated it here. There are obviously a number of big and important items we're going to be encountering this year. And we did add a finance meeting in January. There historically, for some reason, you may know, Richard, had not been a finance meeting in January, but we felt it important, especially as we move into the seventeen-eighteen year school year and the pending deficits, that we're going to need to be very consistent about our communications and our discussions, particularly on the sustainability, financial sustainability front. So that is an added meeting on this, the January seventeenth. It's updated, yeah, finance meeting.
And if I may, I agree with Jennifer that it's worth looking over time at the cadence of our meetings. What we want to do is be able to provide the highest quality information and analysis and response to community and to the board in a timely manner. And so thinking about that is our vision, and then thinking about how we actually create a cadence of meetings is something that's very important to me. So Jennifer, thank you very much for putting that on the table.
Are there any other questions or comments about the calendar? I do know we will be adding, obviously it's noted here, the joint District sixty-five two-oh-two committee meetings. We'll add those as we work with the high school to put those dates together. We've also had some conversations about a park advisory committee meeting and getting that on the agenda as well. But this is the schedule as we know it.
Okay.
Then let's go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Quatrecy?
Yes.
Great. So in terms of committee appointments, because the change in board leadership, we will review appointments for the finance committee. Mr. Rikis has agreed to take on chair of the finance committee. Claudia, everybody else will remain, because there were two-year assignments for our committees. If there, I believe Tracy was open to taking the open role on the finance, open spot in the finance committee, so we'll update that accordingly. Were there any other questions or concerns about positions on the standing committees? No?
I don't know if there's, given the circumstances in the state legislature, if someone, so I normally can't make a lot of the EdRed meetings because of my own, because of work schedule, those meetings are almost always on a Friday afternoon, it's at like one o'clock in the afternoon. So when I can make it, I go, but given the importance, if there's another committee member that wants to, you know, either formally or informally participate in EdRed.
Okay. All right, well, folks, think about that. And if anybody's interested, why don't just channel it to me, and then we'll update this for the next meeting if needed. Great. Is there a vote for that? No? Okay. All right. So now we are moving on to our discussion items. And we've changed the agenda, so the first item up for discussion will be the first draft of the equity statement. Let me lead us in on this.
Yeah, let me lead in on this and then open up for conversation. What I'm presenting tonight is the first draft of an educational and racial equity statement for your comments and questions. Let me tell you a little bit about what this is and what this isn't. This is a vision statement to drive our work. It's a response to the urgency that we all feel around our opportunity and achievement gaps. And it recognizes, most importantly, racial and race and racial disparity as a primary piece of this agenda. What this isn't is a final draft. So part of what I'm intending to do is to hear questions and concerns and thoughts. And this also is not a set of policies or a policy recommendation. This is, again, a vision statement that will drive the work. It will drive the work of the equity leadership team that we've recently convened, which has representatives from each of our schools to serve, to think about the issues that are pointed out here. It will drive the work of focus groups that we plan to convene at the beginning of next year in schools. And working with Corey Wallace, who's our consultant, on this, we will be examining practices. We will be examining policies and procedures that lead to disparities, that lead to racial disparities, and that's actually part of the drive. Out of that, then comes the opportunity to think about and craft a policy, a policy like the Minneapolis Public Schools, which we've shared before, a policy like the Seattle Public Schools, a set of policy statements like Evanston Township High School has, to actually move forward. I want to emphasize, as you read through this or as you've read through this, the priority of race as being primary, that stands up on top. The real intent here is to eliminate racial and cultural biases and structures that exist inside the district so that we can move forward, recognizing that and move forward on the work that has to be done for all of our children. It also, again, recognizes the importance of intentionality around racial disparities and intentionality around other determinants of achievement or opportunity gaps. So I'm here to take feedback tonight, feedback that we've also gotten from the equity leadership team. We'll craft a final statement that will emerge from the conversation tonight that we would hope to bring back for your consideration in June. And then we continue on the work that our equity leadership team will do in examining the work that we have and that we're bringing forward on race, racial disparity, and other disparities, and talking about how that feeds into the work that we're doing on school climate and with our school climate teams, because that's where I see this fitting. So with that, let me open it up for conversation.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I guess first, has this been made public?
Sure. This is part of a, I mean, we put this as part of the.
Sorry, everyone, I've seen it.
Yeah.
I guess, can I, so Roger Williams asked this question about a consultant. I just, I don't know if I can ask the audi, I'm trying to get more information on what you were looking for, Roger. So you read the statement and it did hit home because, because we mentioned Corey Wallace as being a consultant, which is what you were saying that was needed. I'm just trying to figure out based on, has the community read the statement? I guess it's the first question. Community is here, has everyone read the draft statement? And then I'm curious as more as to what the community's thoughts are on the statement.
Basically, what I was, what I was, to.
Roger, could you come to a mic just so that we can, Mr. Williams, sorry?
Sorry. Well, my feeling is that to try to self-monitor, to look at something like this just amongst yourselves, for example, if a person, say if a person is a, suffers from like alcoholism, if you ask a person who's an alcoholic, what impact do you think this is having on your family? He's probably going to say, not too much, I mean, because he enjoys doing it and he doesn't think it's that bad. We need an objective third-party organization to come in and to be present during this whole process with the leadership team. And not only with the leadership team, but also with the equity consultant, who would be, I guess, Corey Wallace. So I'm talking about something that would go on, that you work hand in hand, but someone who can lead a deeper introspection into what's going on and some of the institutional practices and policies that, and some things would come out of that, I think would really be, I think, for it to be successful. Any other question?
So Omar, I had a similar, my question on this was, this is a first step, and it's always important to put something on paper for people to react to. And my question was sort of, what is the process from here in terms of getting community input and having the humility to say, we don't have all the answers ourselves, and we need to have people react to this and add to this and fine-tune it. So that's, that's one question I had about sort of going forward on this process. And then to the exchange right now about a consultant and if I had a magic, one, what I wish is, I wish that there was a process that was bigger or went beyond District sixty-five to say, can we have some kind of task force or community committee that includes sixty-five but is really more, you know, saying, here are, here are the things that we can do within the school system, but we know very well that even if we changed everything in a positive way, that we had control of as a school district, it probably still wouldn't get us all the way there. So I don't know where that fits into this conversation, which is a community conversation, not just a school district conversation.
I wonder if, Paul, you'd be able to speak to the role of the consultant, because I actually, my understanding is I think you would address some of Mr. Williams' comments.
And before you do that, I guess I'm a little bit confused because there seems to be, there's a process question, and there's also like, I mean, I view an equity statement as like, it's our pledge.
Correct.
And in that kind of framing, I don't see it as a long, drawn-out effort. It's what we promise, that we will do. And this was a little bit long for, it's a pretty long promise. I'd like it to be shorter, but talking about the process of getting the information that would make us, help us make a realistic promise, I think that that would be.
So, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mr. Williams. And Corey is here, actually, in the back. A couple steps along the way. One, as we responded to the community concerns that came up when we had a finance committee meeting, actually, as we were moving forward on putting the data in a very transparent way before the community, there was an important push to have an equity statement and then move towards an equity policy and to do it in a timely manner. And so part of, part of the steps here are to do all of our work in a timely manner, but not to ignore the community at all. And so in terms of building some internal processes, step one is that this is a pledge, I appreciate that, Claudia. This is a pledge statement for the district to actually, or a vision statement for how we're going to move forward. But what it's not is the specific steps along the way yet. Step two of this is that the process that we've done, we've convened, and Joyce helped me, there's probably twenty-five people around the table of all races and backgrounds from each of our schools who've come together. And they, in many, in very parallel ways to what Mr. Williams puts forth in a forthright way, welcome the opportunity to actually do deep dives inside our own schools around the practices, the procedures, the processes that occur in classrooms, in our halls, in our discipline, in our teaching, in our learning. And so this is a long journey, and it is a, part of this piece is a self-journey, to be able to actually unpack what goes on in the schools. Step three is that Corey Wallace is going to convene focus groups in our schools between now, really now, but it's, that school's letting out at the beginning of the year for a four-to-six-month period, to be able to do a part of a deep dive within the schools, to talk about the processes and procedures, types of styles of teaching and learning that we're doing and what we're not doing, to be able to unpack what's going on, school by school, feeder patter by feeder patter, so that then we can inform the development of a, of a policy that would be a much stronger stake in the ground. I mean, this is a strong stake in the ground right now, but about how we move forward on our, as a district policy. The question about a community conversation, community task force is a really excellent one. And part of what I was planning to do, if I could squeeze it in between now and the next board meeting, would be to at least convene some school, community members to look at this and to give some feedback. And for sure, we could put this as part of our website to get feedback as well. But to think about a longer-term community possibility that could also listen and learn from what the, what the equity leadership team is coming up with, listen and learn to what we're doing, and then to push us from the perspective of a parent or a community member, is something that I'm happy to consider. And I just have to figure out how to time all of that, to respect the urgency, but to do this in a way that, that makes sense for all the colleagues.
I think there we also need to think about the role of Cradle to Career and its focus on equity as well, as that broader community vehicle for engagement and how we might dovetail with that, you know, as you're part of the work and those of us who have been involved, part of the work is especially looking right now on the outcomes for Cradle to Career and taking an equity lens on those and being more intentional. So I think there's some work that's happening, you know, in conjunction that we could potentially bring together. I wanted to say, I think what I've heard in terms of what the board is in the past, or just kind of crystallizing what we're looking for ultimately, is, you know, this is our pledge, it's step one. The work that needs to be done through both, I think it's inward and outward, right? That's why we're contracting with Ms. Wallace to push, and also embracing this from internally, because ultimately, the change is going to have to have come internally, so the leadership team being internal. And I kind of think, and maybe, just correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like ultimately, the recommendations coming back would be along three general areas: policy, practice, and pedagogy, you know, teaching and instructional changes, that those are the, and we also have, obviously, you know, as you included in here, thriving workforce and recruitment and making sure our, our staff teams are reflective of diversity. But is that a fair statement, Paul, in terms of like the scope of the work?
But it's an absolute fair statement, I think. Unpacking what those terms mean, especially in our practice. So I know that as we've presented data and as we've actually moved forward to change our disciplinary policy and to really think about how we engage young people so they stay in school, they stay learning, that that would be part of the practice piece, you know. And so we may have a policy that says that alternatives to suspension and the deep commitment to keep a child in school is what we want to have. How's that playing itself out? And that's part of what we want to go and investigate.
So, sorry, Richard, did you have something?
Just a quick add. I think one of the terms that you've used, Paul, to refer to Ms. Wallace's work, tell me if I'm incorrect, is an audit, that we're, there's, there are criteria that she's looking at, policy, practice, pedagogy, perhaps.
Like three Ps.
You know, whatever it may be, but that she's. You know, whatever it may be, but that she's going to be comparing our work to some standards or to some criteria that she's predeveloped as an outside point of comparison that we will not be leading. And so for me, just to speak to Mr. Williams' comment, I think we have that outside party who's objectively evaluating in place. I mean, if someone sees it differently, I absolutely would welcome hearing that, but that's how I've perceived it.
And it's that, and it's also, uh, the work that I see Cory doing is also around the type of appropriate training, um, that we all as a staff need once, as we are finding out and discovering our practices and policies that are leading to disparities. Some of those things we probably know already, again, the discipline policy is a good one. Um, and I think that's where we, we're gonna have to be intentional around our training, uh, which, which will also be part of what we're gonna be doing over the next six to nine months.
So, and, and in terms of, like, what is it that you want from us as a next step? Do you want us to also, just like the community, submit comments and ideas? Because the one, one piece that stood out right away, especially in comparing it to some of the other, um, the other equity statements from around the country, was the lack of any parent, you know, piece of this. To, you know, we've talked a lot about community and family engagement, but there wasn't, there wasn't a strong statement here. And, I mean, just, just going right to the practice piece of this down the road, you know, you, 54% of incoming kindergarteners, you know, aren't making all the Icel standards, you know? What if for those 54% of kindergarteners, you have four instead of two parent conferences every year, right? Like, there are pieces of practice that could be implemented quickly and nimbly that go right to a pledge and a practice. Anyway, um, so I'm curious, is there a timeline that you need to give us in terms of what kind, like, what comments you want from the board?
That sort of feedback is exactly what I'm looking for. And, um, I just have to backward map, I don't have the date in front of me, but, uh, the next board meeting is June 13th. So, that, that's, that's one of the reasons why.
You want the final?
Well, I wanna, you know, one of the commitments I made was that we would do a draft now and then a final. And we may need, I don't wanna, I don't wanna back away from that. But if, if I don't back away from that, then, uh, June 1st, I, I need some time or, my team needs some time to actually take the feedback, put it together so that we can, we can come forward. So I need to, somewhere that first week of June, I can get back to you or I can look at my calendar if you let me and I can give you a date.
Yeah, well, why don't we just say a week from today?
Why, yeah, seven days.
Yeah, that's even better. A week from tomorrow, uh, a week from today is a holiday, so I'll give you the holiday.
Okay, week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, did, did others have more immediate reactions or comments?
Well, just, did, when, the, what you've given us here, did you, you think, it's like, how many pages long is this? It's, yeah, two.
There's a cover memo, but the, it itself is two.
Yeah.
Um, was it your goal to have a shorter pledge? I mean, are you looking for cuts?
Always looking for cuts and, uh, but, but not to cut out what are, what's primary. And what's primary is, um, indeed to honor strengths and assets of all kids, to, to pay attention to race and racial disparities. I mean, those are, those are two things that are, that I don't wanna cut and I don't wanna take from the headline.
I wasn't, it wasn't really talking about substances such as that where it's repetitive or where we're taking, say, something from our strategic plan and putting it in this pledge too, do we really need?
Please, no, that's, that I would welcome and invite.
Um, Cynthia, I have one other kind of substantive comment that I think I heard in a number of the themes that we've been talking about. How does our commitments and our pledge translate into our resource allocations? And so I would like to see something here about our commitment towards equity and information related to our equitable distribution, distribution of, of fundings and, and our resources.
As part of the pledge?
As part of the pledge, whether it's, you know, um, what, something we're committed to, um, part of the process, but I think one of the things we owe the community is to start to see how we're using our dollars and that that's devoted to the places that we have set are our priorities. So being, you know, more transparent about that, so whatever, however to language that.
For instance, like the Haven support?
Correct, you know?
Just to put a fine line on it.
Right. So that, that type of support and those in the strategic plan that we have already committed to, much of which we are funding.
Right. But as we unpack the Haven support, there are three or four dominoes that are related to that excellent program, as it relates to mathematic, mathematics programming, as it relates to counseling, as it relates to, um, allocations at each of the schools, some of which some schools get a little extra and some don't. And that's part of already our deep dive into how do we actually pay attention to where, where the needs are and how we, how we do our resources.
So I think we can come back to that, maybe at the finance meeting if we're talking about ultimately a decision there. But as an example, um, that's a good example.
Um, I will, excuse me, echo Claudia's comments about the length of it, and I think, you know, like you said, Paul, I don't, I don't think anybody wants to dilute the, the specific call to dealing with the racial disparities, but I think we can do that in a, in a, we can be more efficient about how we, how we state that.
More concise.
Right, exactly. Um, and there's some of this that I think kind of, you know, the listing of the efforts that we already have, that might be more towards whatever policy, um, statement we ultimately craft, which I envisioning is something that will take a good chunk of our work in policy committee meetings over the course of next year, which is in fact, you know, a reason that we decided to add, um, a policy committee meeting, uh, next year. Um, I, I have, I mean, I, I'm completely in favor of the idea of an audit and, um, if, well, I'm understanding what Richard described as the work that Ms. Wallace is gonna do, I think that that is important and, and I strongly support, however we're gonna go about achieving that, I do think that we need to include the board in whatever that, you know, whatever training or audit work, um, i- is happening. Our own policies and practices have to, have to be included in that. And if, if this was already stated, I'm sorry for, but can we real, what is the timeline of all of this? Because I'm sort of envisioning that a lot of what comes as into a policy statement that we're gonna make is going to come out of the audit work. So I don't know how, what are, how are we envisioning that laying out?
So, uh, most importantly, I wanted to take the call and the call of urgency to move, that community members actually push to move fast on the statement. So I thank you for indulging me and us on what is a draft so that we can keep the conversation going, and I think that's really important, keep the conversation going in June. I think to do the work, um, over, which would be school-by-school focus areas, the beginning of some training, um, some training for some of the senior team, um, and some, some self-reflection as we're moving forward, and then to do with the equity leadership team, um, engagement around, um, what we're learning from each of the schools, it's gonna take four to six months. I mean, it's just, so, um, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna slow the process down, I don't wanna not recognize the urgency of where we're at, but I also wanna do the work well and to make sure that, um, that we're going deeply into, um, into the schools. And some of this is about school-by-school, um, analysis. We're gonna, uh, at the very least, uh, go into the, um, the six schools that have school climate teams right now, we're doing six more schools on school climate teams, and so I can, I can see at least getting to that point and, again, without trying to overpromise four to six months. Is that a fair?
Would it be possible for, um, maybe as an FYI, for a future meeting, just to have kind of the scope, the schedule and plan?
Sure, sure.
Um, so that folks can see how that's gonna lay out as you work through that with Ms. Wallace? And then that can be shared with the public as well, knowing those things are living documents and, you know, the dates sometimes change, but at least to give us a scope.
I, I think it's really important to keep it in the forefront. So whatever we're doing, you know, if, you know, even if only two schools have been looked at, well, we looked at these two schools and this is what we found to date, and then I, we, so every time that we get together, we're, we've got it there on our agenda and we're talking about it, because I think sometimes efforts such as this, I have the strategic plan, we talked about a lot as we went through the process, and I think in the same way we have to treat this the same.
I appreciate that. And again, at risk of, this sounded like an excuse, and I apologize if it is, but we, um, we've crafted this as a draft. We also, last week, had two community meetings, uh, with, uh, members of the community who are Hispanic, Latino, and who are African-American and Black to be able to, to listen. We also convened the 25-person equity leadership team last week as well, so, um, with dispatch is what I heard from community members, um, and we're working with dispatch. And I, I, I think by leaving it, keeping it, pushing it on our agendas on a regular basis, we can, we can, uh, we can make that commitment.
I just want, so, um, I didn't say how I felt about it, but, um, no, I think it's a good statement. I think there's sort of, I think Jennifer touched on it, maybe Candace did, there's, there's either, uh, I don't know if it's a parent connection or a community connection, but we, we commit to students, we commit to teachers, diverse workforce, but we never say we commit to making sure that parents feel, you know, whatever, however you wanna phrase that, welcome or whatever, sort of support parents as well, or diverse parents as well.
Yeah.
And this is more, this is less maybe about the statement, and, and perhaps this is shorthand that we're falling into a trap of, but we keep talking about schools and committees and things like that, but we haven't really talked about the unit of analysis is the child, the child and kids. I hope somewhere along the line, focus groups will include students themselves, um, to understand more about what their internal motivations are and what they're most excited about and what they'd like to see changed.
So we've done, and Izzy Nunez has done a few community conversations that have include, included students as, as part of that, so that's one thing that we need to summarize and bring back and talk very candidly about what we've learned.
I think we can, like, use the language, remember when we're talking.
Yep, yeah. I think the other thing too, uh, at one of our previous meetings, Omar, uh, pushed on talking also about success and then talking about where those stories are of success for kids. And so, um, I took the liberty to reach out to Steve Newman, who runs the Evanston Scholars, just to try to talk to him about perhaps doing some focus groups with, um, a few of those students. But I, I wanna also see how we can go into our own schools. So those would be folks at the ETHS who have, who have gone through 65, who are actually on a trajectory to really, um, making a difference in the world. I think we have many of those stories. Um, and then we have many truthful stories that we have to actually unpack in our schools and that we can start at the middle school, um, and we can try to creep down to actually start to talk and, and take some of the methodology that Izzy used to talk to, to the kids.
Tracy?
Uh, maybe I missed this about the parental input or the community input for the statement, but I think we don't wanna present a final draft before we're really sure we've heard from everyone. And I'm wondering whether we can do what we did with our mission statement, which is posted on our website and ask for some emails and feedback and try to incorporate that into the final, um, draft. Just a thought to get more buy-in.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, again, I don't wanna slow down the process and so, one, we can try to post this as we did on our web and, and encourage a conversation. And then, I, you know, we, again, the timing is everything, so it's just thinking about how we would get some feedback by, uh, next week or late next week. Um, and if that feels like we're rushing it, we can still take that feedback and report back and then, um, continue it on through August and August or September. So I don't wanna shy away from having a final statement, but I, which I won't, but I think we wanna be sensitive to the feedback we need to get.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm hearing kind of two formats. We have folks from the community that have already bailed themselves to us, you know, and we know how to reach out to them, so if we can make an effort to, we can do that piece as well as then a more broad-based approach.
True.
Reality probably is, for the broader approach, once the school year ends, we may lose the attention. So, and that's only 10 days?
Right.
Wait, how many?
Yeah, I don't think this is, doesn't need to be a long-term thing, I think, just give an opportunity. So I, I would lean us more towards maintaining the momentum and calling on the folks that we know are engaged in the process and then making it available to others as well with a shorter timeframe. Does that make sense with everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Paul, for, uh, moving on this so quickly. I think there are, a lot of work has been done and, um, we are gonna continue to keep it at the top of our priority list and on our site, so thank you for moving us forward. If you have comments, you have one week to get them to.
Yeah.
Dr. Goren, one week and 10 hours. Um, so next we have our transportation update. Dr. Somalia?
Smalowicz.
Karen, I can't pronounce your last name, so.
Let me, as, as Karen comes forward, Karen, Dr. Karen Smalowicz, who's a, um, professor at the McCormick School of Engineering at Northwestern. And, uh, um, one of the things I wanna do in just introducing, we, we came before the finance committee, um, several months ago with some ideas towards transportation changes. That brought out, um, some deep involvement of our community members saying, what are we really doing and can we actually look at the system as a whole? And I happened to run into Karen at that meeting, who had some concerns about, um, a couple of the transportation routes. And then she told me her bona fides, which is as a, a scholar, scholar, engineer, practitioner, um, as it relates to transportation, uh, logistics. And so we've had the great opportunity, thanks to Karen, to have her do a deep dive into, um, our, um, transportation system and to get to a point, this is not a final report by any means, it's a, um, it's a beginning, uh, it's a, it's a check-in on where she's at and where she's, uh, where she's going, um, as we think about, uh, concerns around efficiencies, around costs, around time on bus, et cetera. Um, Karen, let me just, on behalf of the board and all of us who are staff members, uh, both thank you and your leadership, the leadership of the McCormick School of Engineering. This is a, this is a project that is frankly pro bono and, uh, God bless you. And, and again, let me tip my hat, uh, to your, your other bosses, to Dan Linzer, who's the provost, and to Marty Shapiro, who's the president, who's, who've both made just a fantastic commitment to serving community. And so this in the service of community is gonna open up, um, a wide range of, of opportunities for us to, to learn.
And they, Northwestern has put in a little, I should note, that they've given us some money for grad, for student support to pay for this. Um, and one of my colleagues, Jill, who's here, so what I wanted to do?
It's best to talk in the line.
Can you hear me? Sorry. I like to walk when I talk, it's, but I will try to stay seated, I have not good standing. Um, so we had a two-hour meeting, um, on Wednesday, Paul and Mary and Jill and our students. I don't wanna keep you for two hours. So, uh, what we said was, the first part of the study was, we were going to just look at the current state of transportation. So I'm gonna report on that tonight. Um, I'm not going to show you route by route, but, um, certainly we can dig into routes, but I wanted to show you what we're starting to look at. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about some ridership pattern observations and the survey that we did. I'm gonna start with a little bit of math, so bear with me for a minute. Uh, when we first started looking at the routes, they're very different, right? And, and so you could look at any route in District 65 and say, this one has a lot of stops, this one is really long, and you need a way to be able to look at all of them together. And so what we did here is what's called convex hull. So I'm gonna describe convex hull in the easiest way. If you had a bunch of points on a piece of paper like nails and you wanted to take the, a rubber band, the smallest rubber band to contain all of the points. Make sense? So what we wanna do is, we wanna think about geographic area, 'cause we needed a way to compare the routes and to say, what should a good route look like? So what I'm gonna show you is the geographic spread of all of the routes. We're gonna look at it by school, by individual route, so you can say, this route covers a large area, so it should be long. This route covers a small area, it should not be long, there should not be a lot of stops. Or you should say, for a given school, the geographic area should not overlap. Okay, so this is kind of the basis of our analysis. And so you can see it very clearly with the magnet schools, the color's coming out a little funky here. Uh, I'm just gonna show you Bessie Rhodes, it's the same at King Arts, but what you see is, there's a, a blue is, there's a blue route on top, a green route, a light blue route, red and black. And this is where we see that over time, since routes are kind of added as students come on board, you have routes that could be made more efficient, right? And so can we do more to avoid having these overlap of the routes? Because you can see in the statistics here, there are routes that are quite long in terms of how long students are on buses, but there's also big spreads. You have a route with 68 students and a route with 12. And so just at the magnet schools, what can we do? But then that also begs the question, because the magnet schools are in the first shift, so the first round of buses that go out, saving a bus at the magnet level doesn't save you as much money as saving for the attendance area schools. So you also have to think about, where do you want, where can we save money? The other issue with the magnet schools is that the geographic distribution of students changes from year to year. So how do we find solutions that are stable so that you can be able to be efficient every year and not end up back in this situation? The other thing I want to talk about is, once you look across schools and you look at things like the ESL programs. So what we found is, there are students moving around District 65 a lot, is the way I'm going to say this. But you can look at, here are three schools that have ESL programs, and you can see the spread. This is pretty much the same geographic area, the three pictures. And so you can see where students are going. And what ends up happening is, the routes are really pulled. This convex hull, this rubber band, is being pulled by students at the extreme points. And so can we think about partnering between transportation and the English language programs? To think about all things being equal, are there ways to think about what schools students are going to? Just to think about, it's these extreme points in the ESL programs, and you can see the same thing in the TWE programs, that are making these very large time on bus. Right? And so when you think about it, what you want for buses is, you want to take kids who are in a geographically dense area and move them somewhere. What you don't want is the big spread. You can ask questions.
That's okay.
Okay.
I was just, I was fascinated with this, trying to actually make sense of it while I was reading it this weekend, because there's frankly a lot here that I did not understand on my own, which is great. And I just noticed that I think one of the TWE programs was omitted for DAWs.
Do we not have DAWs? I have, yeah, I have all of the routes. But like I said, it took us two hours to go through all the routes, so I didn't want to give you all of the routes.
That's fine.
Yeah. Because what you'll see even there is that it's going to spread, it's, is there a way to think about how kids are going? So there was a study at MIT last, two years ago, that looked at the school choice program. And so the way the lottery is done at, in Boston, creates this spread of students going to schools all the way across Boston. And so what the mayor asked, is there, is there a way that we can do this, but also have community cohesion? So what they worked into the lottery system is a way to, all things again being, well, students still got to rank, or parents got to rank their schools, but as you were making the selection, could you put another element of school cohesion in? So thinking about, is there a way that when you decide which school, the students go to which ESL programs and which TWE programs, to think about this concept of school cohesion? And to think about geographically where students are, because again, it's these extreme points. It's not large numbers that are making the buses inefficient, it's points that are spreading them out. And you can see even when you go, so, sorry, DAWs is here without TWE. But even when you look at schools without TWE or ESL, so you can think about Kingsley and Lincolnwood, the spread across District 65. And thinking about, are there other ways that we can address transportation rather than the yellow school buses? That there may be other ways to look at it. You can think about that Kingsley, green bus, the time on bus is very high for that route. And so.
I was just curious about that. So what are the circumstances that, is it permissive transfers that, if it causes, I mean, that's basically down at Oakden, right?
Yeah.
You're picking up a student at Oakden, around Oakden, to go to Kingsley. So what are the circumstances?
We don't bus for permissive transfers, so it's likely, based on the student need, it could be the student meets our homeless criteria, and that might have been their last school of attendance. We think those are the outliers, yeah.
And so we did, yeah, so there's 793 students who, so the way to read this chart, so this was another thing you probably struggled with this weekend, right? So the way to read this is that, around the columns is the outflow. So this is thinking about where you live, if you're not going to school or where you live. So the red would mean, 80 students who live in the DAWs attendance area do not attend DAWs. And then on the rows, that's the inflow. So I can't read the colors very well, but it looks like there's 70-something students who do not live in the DAWs area who go to DAWs. So there are 793 students, this is not the magnet schools, but 793 students in District 65 who are not going to schools in their attendance area. You take out the permissive transfers because they're not bussed. So then that leaves 585 who are being transported by bus. Now, this is where we intend to look further. Right now, we, our data are de-identified. So what we see for students, we do see their home address. So in order to make all the maps and to understand the routes, we have their home address. But to really understand what's going on, you need to dig into the programs that Mary was talking about. And now, because what we're finding, I think our initial thought was, it was just going to be the numbers. It's just because students are going to maybe not the closest school in Evanston, and that was driving what is happening in Bussin'. But what we're finding is, that's not the case. What it really is, like I said, are those, those extreme points that are pulling the convex hull of the routes. Now, those extreme points are children, and so we have to be sensitive. I can't give my students at Northwestern access to that data. So I think our next step is thinking about, how do we analyze this, knowing that from a data perspective, this is a situation you don't want to be in, or at least from my perspective? Because you need to start thinking about individual students.
Yes, the question, on those maps, at those outline areas, those children, are they closer to others? I couldn't tell that those maps are all close together. Are they actually physically closer to other schools? Because it looks like.
So these are all the same geographic area?
So then these aren't four quadrants, these are?
Nope.
Okay.
You can see, the color looks really bad here, but I tried to keep, you can see, you can see for ESL, the Triangle Park is in the left on each one, between, was that Gross Point? And so there, that's, and then the southern border of Evanston is the same, and then the eastern border, or, yeah, the eastern border. So no, it's not quadrants. It's just all of Evanston.
So the basic reasons that we know up there in Glauco were certainly for ESL, TWE progression, potentially within Evento. Would there be any other circumstances, Mary, from a policy or, you know, a dramatic standpoint that would make up that 585?
There could be a very small number who may, are not eligible for a special needs bus, but may have very unique requirements, where we chose to keep them at the school because of family need or, you know, a very serious situation. So we could have some of those as well.
So like I said, I don't want to go through every route. We spent about an hour, I think, going through each school and each route last week. Yeah? Just, you already said this, I apologize. The, these numbers exclude the magnet schools? Was that, is there a reason for that? Yeah. So we wanted to look at, because what you have with the magnet school is, you have kids going at least to one location. So you have concentration. What we wanted to look at was, for the routes, because for the magnet schools, I think we know kind of what you can do. So, right, so the magnet schools, it's low-hanging fruit. You can improve these routes. That, that's pretty easy in terms of just trying to avoid the overlap. You can see the route, the first route, Bessie Roads one, there's one point up at the top. If you switch that to another route, all of a sudden, you've improved service. So the magnet schools, I think, are easier, but it's also, while it's low-hanging fruit, it's also a less valuable savings, because these are the morning buses, right? And so there's already fewer of them. There's 10 fewer of the early morning buses. And so, Mary, if I learned the cost right, it's $36,000 for one bus and $40,000 if it's paired. So you want to save, you want to cut those second buses to get money, not the first ones. Other questions on the routes? So another thing that we wanted to look at with the ridership study is, we wanted to look at, if you control for hazards. So these are students who are eligible for a bus because of a hazard, why are some of them choosing to walk and some are choosing to ride the bus? Because this is the question for the schools where they might lose buses when the hazards change, are they going to walk or are they going to drive? Some of the schools have been concerned about the increased traffic. And so, right now, this is looking at just the public schools. So the program is public, so those 585 students are not in here. This is just looking at students who attend their attendance area elementary school. I want to look at the ones who are eligible for the bus because of hazards. Because what we wanted to look at is, why would you choose to use a bus or not use a bus if you have hazard, or you're hazard eligible? And you can look at, so there's the blue and the orange. The blue is, again, this is on the left, students who are hazard eligible for the bus. And you can see that the blue students, the students who are hazard eligible and choose to use the bus, are located on average further from their home. And this supports the literature, that students are choosing the bus because of distance. So when you think about some of the schools that might lose their buses, because the hazards are removed, realistically, they're going to be transported by cars, more of them. So we spent some time this past week at Lincoln, Dewey, and Kingsley, looking at traffic. But I think that's something that, over the next year, if these buses are to go away for hazards, we will need to think about traffic mitigation at those schools, that the traffic will go up. Questions on this one? Nope. Okay, so then we also did a survey. I, we got over 500 responses from parents. So we did an online version in English and Spanish, and we also had a paper version that was distributed at parent teacher conferences, also in English and in Spanish. You can see the dark blue is District 65 enrollment. And so if the survey was perfectly unbiased, those two, the dark blue and the light blue, would be the same, but they're not. So we did have a higher percentage of respondents from Dewey and Kingsley. And these are two schools that are concerned about the impact of traffic on their schools. So this may be more, I also am a Kingsley mom, so I could, my name was on the letter, so probably that biases things as well. Overall, we wanted to look at a couple of things. So this is of the comments in the survey. We also, I coded them for whether they went into a category of concerns or in suggestions or what I call willingness. And so hazards came up as a big concern for parents. There was a lot of concerns about service, but I think that a lot of that was also dependent on last year. And so parents who said, after last year, last couple of years, I wouldn't ride the bus. There was some concerns about increased traffic of bus service is removed. On the willingness side, so one thing that we wanted to look at, a lot of parents said they'd be willing to pay for service, that we'd be willing to pay if you don't take away my bus. And so one thing we wanted to do in coding for concerns, because we also know the school, is we wanted to look at the magnet schools where parents are paying for transportation, did they have higher expectations? And measuring higher expectations in terms of, did they want more service? Did they have more concerns? And we didn't find anything significant. We didn't find that there was a big difference in the perception of District 65 busing between the parents who paid for service and those who didn't. So if you decided to go the route of offering transportation at a cost, that was one thing we thought, well, one concern we initially had that I think we would not have. Another big comment that came up from parents was that they would be willing to walk further to bus stops. And so one of the questions we asked in the survey is, how far would you be willing? And a fair number of parents were willing to walk in just one block, which is traditionally what we have right now in the stops, is one block, but to go for two blocks. So I think that one of the things that we're looking at over the summer is looking at what happens if you reduce the number of bus stops on some of the routes? And does that allow you to reduce some routes? So what we're doing next, like I said, the, so the study is in three stages. The first stage, which we're concluding now, is just analyzing the current state of transportation. The summer is looking at, what can we do in the short term? What is some of that low-hanging fruit? You know, obviously from the magnet schools, I think we see some ideas, but are there other ideas with existing routes? And then beyond that, we started the traffic study, but I think that if we really want to see what's going on, we need to do it in worse weather and do it for longer periods of time. And then in stage three is, is over the course of next year, thinking about, what are some of the larger gains you can get in transportation? If you look outside of transportation for the current needs, but actually shifted some of the transportation needs by thinking about the placement at, in ESL and TWE, can that alleviate some of the traffic needs or transportation needs in the, in the district? So that was a very quick assessment of what we talked about for two hours, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our study and our next steps.
Anybody have questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you for this. This is, like Richard said, I just kind of started looking through this and trying to go through it on my own. It was like, I know that I'm going to be learning a lot during the presentation, and I did. So thank you for that. One question about the routes that you mapped out here. This is all of them, right? Not just the one, like the mile and a half from, because you, a lot of the routes that we were talking about, eliminating are the within the mile and a half.
Yeah.
Right. So, but this includes everything?
Yeah. So the only students, there are only 68 students in District 65, not the magnet schools, and not the out-of-district. So if you just look at attendance area, there's only 68 students who bus for distance.
Okay.
And that's at Willard. Everything else is hazard.
Right.
So, yeah, so those are all hazard, pretty much, except the magnet schools and the out-of-district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the question around that is, if we're talking about, like, looking at kids going closer to their attendance areas, or, you know, where students are going, I think, and we've brought this up in the past before, looking at how we divide up the attendance area now, and particularly the busing that we do, of busing kids out of Fifth Ward, I think is something that has to be a part of the discussion. On the page 11, with the busing for hazards, because I know one of the things that came up is that we have some bus routes that are designated as being for hazards that aren't actually hazards, or they were incorrectly filed as hazards. So is that accounted for in there?
No.
Or is it just whatever was currently have?
This is the current, this is the current state, yeah.
Okay.
So. But again, and you say, the busing, that may cut you a bus, definitely. And when you think about, you said, you were talking about busing out of Fifth Ward. But again, you're talking about density. And density of transportation is good, right? So my initial study, when I looked at that, is, you know, you're thinking about busing out of the Fifth Ward, but you're taking students who live close to each other and moving them to a single location. From a transportation perspective, that's good. Really where it's driving District 65 to these large number of buses is pulling at the extremes. And, but then this becomes, this is a much bigger, you know, when we talk about the Northwestern study, now we bring in people from CESP, from education and social policy, and thinking about, are your routes efficient? No, but if they're effective, if they're getting the learning outcomes you want, then maybe it's okay. But I can't judge that. I can do transportation, I can do logistics. But I can say that the decisions around how students are being placed in TWE and ESL is driving up transportation costs. And so what can you do there?
I just want to, can you go to page, or, I don't know if it's in your deck. I was just looking, you put on page 119, you put in this, importance of distance is consistent with literature. And then you went to this other chart with, I didn't know what the public B H, there was no.
Oh, yeah.
Like, whoa, who is it?
Right here?
No, keep going.
We have, we have all your slides from the packet.
Oh, yeah. So I did do.
Yeah, so what, so you went there.
So these are some, this is a study, the one on the left was, it was published in 2001, but it's early 2000 data. And then the other is data on 2008, and looking at what causes mode choice of parents, it, it transportation. And so on the left, this was looking at some of the new, across the US, so this is not District 65 data.
Okay.
But looking at, across the US, why do people choose the mode that they do? And that distance is the biggest factor. And so nationwide, as these safe route-to-school programs were coming out to increase walking, if the distance were decreased, then they weren't having the intended outcome.
Then the next slide, I just, I didn't hear, I didn't know what the B to H.
Ah, yeah. So B is bus for distance. And so you see just that 68 at Willard. So there are 68 kids at Willard who bus for distance, but all other attendance area schools. So not the magnet schools and not any, not ESL, not TWE, those special programs, but just your attendance area school, it's all hazard. So B is, is bus, H is hazard, and then, yep, so this was looking at busing. So, B is bus, H is hazard, and then, yep, so this was looking at busing. It's a lot of kids.
Yeah, I just didn't know what the B and the H stood for.
Are there other, other questions?
I need to follow policy.
Oh, go ahead.
It's not a question, it is just appreciation. I know we, not really us, you and your team fortunately, have a lot of work ahead of you still, and we just really appreciate you elevating our sophistication in this analysis. And I think you're just another example of so many parents who bring their expertise to the district. So, thank you very much. It's going to have a very, we hope, significant impact, maybe not quite next year, but certainly in the year that follows. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. And the one thing I wanted to ask, and so maybe this is something for us to follow up on policy, I believe with respect to TUI, there is a, there's a local, isn't, there's a factoring in for proximity to the home, to the local school. I don't know whether that is the case for ESL, and so that might be something, you know, whether closeness to the school factors in at all until the, to the program selection. And if so, that may be, I think what you're pointing to is that may be something that we could, we could potentially look at, and we'll have to look at the pros and cons of that as well. Sorry.
Well, and I think one of the many takeaways from Karen's work just to date, and it's still a work in progress, is that something's going to have to change if we want to get to efficiencies and effectiveness and cost effectiveness. And yet, we have to be sensitive to the goals of our programs and our, and the policies governing our programs. So, those may have to change as well, or be up for moderation. So, that's the fascinating intersection of logistics, somebody with, who's an expert, a worldwide expert on logistics, focusing on and helping us then think about where we have to make some changes in our policies.
Right, and that's where it gets challenging, because again, you want density. So, then, one thing you would think about, okay, let's take students who may be attending different schools, but live near each other, and put them on the same bus going to different schools. But then, you know, as we've talked about with Mary, you also want to make sure you're not identifying students in certain ways, right? So, you could look at, you know, as we were talking, there's the program for students who are homeless, you want to let them go to their last school, they're pulling man to those convex halls, but you also don't want to have a bus that's easily identified. And so, so there's kind of the challenges there. Are there other ways we can achieve density of students on buses in ways that are also sensitive to the needs of the students? It's a hard problem. So, you know, from a research perspective, I love it. It's been really neat, it's not...
We're so glad we're here for you.
I know. It's been a challenge, it's hard. You know, it's novel, we expected to uncover, and it's been interesting.
Karen brought two of her undergraduate students with her, and, you know, right in the middle of doing logistics planning, we were talking about major social policy, and it was fantastic to watch their eyes bright.
I just had a couple more requests for acronym identification. On the same chart there, OOD?
Out-of-district.
Out-of-district.
So, out-of-district is separate from the magnets, but those are those 593 students. It's actually 585, I didn't remember something else. These are the students who are attending different schools. So, TUI is in there, ESL is in there. So, it's all of the programs that are not magnet schools, but you're going to a school other than your attendance school.
Okay, so the district is not District 65, it's your school's attendance area.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the other one was, no, oh, yeah, HSSPD?
Oh, that was the special, Mary, I'm going to picture.
But it's the HS, that was, is that high school?
High school.
Head Start. That's the program here in our building.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, but we did, I'm not sure whether, but that's still someone going to Washington, because in this, we did not look at the Head Start buses in our analysis. We looked a little bit at SHU, but we pretty much focused on the magnet schools and the elementary schools.
All right. So, we will hear again from you after phase two?
Yeah, so the plan is over the summer to work through some ideas, see what we can come up with, and then really think about what is it we want to accomplish next year? So, what kind of studies, if we want to do traffic studies, where do we want to do it, what is it going to take, things like that, so kind of a subset.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Go Kings.
Go Kings. Next up is our, our part two of the Evanston Community Schools Initiative, continued on from two months ago.
It's a sequel. Izzy's going to get us kicked off.
Okay, great.
Load up some slides.
We're all very excited. Unfortunately, some of our speakers earlier let the cat out of the bag, but... That's okay. It was public, it was in the package. That's good. All right. We don't put cats in bags in District 65 either, so.
Well, thank you. We are excited to be here as we talk about part two tonight, in our expansion model for community schools. And in March, the Evanston Community School Initiative convened to present lessons learned, the logic model, and the implementation plan for expansion. Since then, we're happy to announce that the Community School Action Team at SHU launched with an orientation last week, which was really exciting, with various stakeholders of the community. We have parents, from parents on a mission, we had community members and various representatives from the agencies around Evanston that serve our students and their families. And as promised, we're back here for part two. And tonight, we'll be discussing site selection process, recommendation, funding, and our continuous improvement plan. And so, now, we'll hear about the site selection framework and the process we chose as we're going to move forward. So, good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you again. I'm Erin Moore, I am the Director of Community Schools with YOU. So, when we last left you in late March, we had a great discussion about those pieces of part one of our proposal that Izzy laid out, and we had our work cut out for us to develop, first and foremost, we rolled up our sleeves around the site selection process. And really, we went to the Shared Leadership Group, which is the Evanston Community Schools Initiative Leadership Council, that has existed for the past two years to really create and sustain the vision, oversight, and policy development of the initiative. And that group is made up of representatives from District 65, both admin and board, we were with Sunny and Candace, as well as representatives from YOU staff and board, the United Way, Foundation 65, SHU Middle School, and we have a community rep as well. So, we wanted to get kind of a theme of this evening, a group of folks around the table to help us determine what would be our framework for making a site selection decision, what are some of kind of the criteria we would use to look at in making that decision, and then, what process would we use to gather the necessary information and put that information up against the criteria so that we could come before you to spit out a recommendation? So, we came up with really three leading criteria for making the decision, our framework, if you will. So, the first piece, we defined as school readiness, readiness of the school. So, we believed that the implementation plan that we laid out to you in March was very ambitious, right? It included convening the Community School Action Team, and bringing that team through a process of needs assessment, asset mapping, setting priorities, benchmarks, goals, and accountability structures, all in year one, piloting one to two new programs based off of that site level plan, and doing the parent organizing and leadership development model from outreach and recruitment through training and launching a parent team to help inform the work. So, we were like, whew, that is an ambitious implementation plan. We need to really value readiness of a school community that is going to roll up its sleeves and go work hand-in-hand with the community school manager at that site to move those priorities forward. So, that was the readiness piece of our, of our site selection framework. We also wanted to look at the need at the school community. So, we look, we wanted to really go into a school community where the model would be embraced, and would not only be embraced, but would find families and students who are in need of resources. So, we've talked a lot about the opportunity gap tonight, and we wanted to go into a school where we would be providing young people with opportunities they wouldn't otherwise have. And then, third, we looked at existing partnerships. And that criteria kind of had two branches, more of an asset-oriented branch and a needs-oriented branch. So, on the asset-oriented branch, currently, YOU is the lead partner agency that is ready to move forward with this initiative. And so, we wanted to, we narrowed our search to schools that have YOU programming existing, and where that partnership already has a foothold established in the school community and relationships on the ground. And then, more from a needs framework, we wanted to identify schools where there may be some gaps in partnership programming that the Community School Action Team could leverage some new programs to fill. So, with those three criteria identified, then we needed a process to gather the necessary information to put up against that criteria. So, we started by digging into some data. We looked at a range of school data, so everything from free and reduced lunch numbers, to five essentials metrics, to chronic absenteeism rates. And we put that also alongside data from YOU's programmatic impact in that school. So, our enrollment in those sites, attendance among families at family nights, students utilizing our clinical services, we'll put that information side by side in front of the Leadership Council. Our other main way of gathering information was principal conversations or principal interviews. And we developed a set of questions and a rubric, if you will, for having one-hour meetings with the principals of the contender sites to really drill down on the three criteria for selection. So, school readiness, need, and existing partnership programs and services. So, we gathered all this information, and we took it to our stakeholder groups. So, we took it to the Evanston Community Schools Leadership Council, the District Cabinet, and the YOU Executive Team. And... Here we go. So, before we kick into the recommendation, which is clearly no surprise to anyone here, I do, I did want to just really state that all of the schools that we looked into had tremendous assets and strengths that would make them wonderful community schools. And it's no surprise to any of you that it is the position of many of us sitting up here, that all of our schools could one day be community schools. But really, in making this decision, we had to hone in on what would be the best school for right now, for the moment that we're in, and teasing out the qualities of a school that sort of bubbled up to the surface at the end of the day to make us say, okay, I think this is the one. And so, in the readiness criteria, King Arts, we kind of broke that out into three strands. So, the first piece of readiness is support for the model, is the school, and particularly the school leadership saying, we want this, we see an opportunity gap in our community, we want to use this model to fill in some of those gaps, we would embrace you. And I don't think it will be a surprise to any of you sitting here, that didn't really help us make the decision, because all of the schools that we talked with, by and large, said, we're really excited about this, we're really excited, the district is doing it, and we would be interested in this. The second two pieces of readiness, we were able to pull out more information to inform our decision. So, alignment with the school goals and vision. We really wanted to go to a school where the community school model wouldn't be an extra, it would be a vehicle for accomplishing things that the school already wants to do. And we found that when, when the school's priorities and the community school framework of engaging stakeholders and moving forward with a partnership model works hand-in-hand with the vision of the school, success is much more likely. And so, at King Arts, we had a really rich conversation with Dr. Brown, which she's going to tell you more about in a minute, where really, some of the school's goals, and I think we heard this in some of our discussion earlier this evening, around inclusion, diversity, family engagement, and partnerships seemed like a natural fit. And then, the third piece of readiness was capacity. So, you could have a school that's really excited and embraces the model, maybe its vision is aligned with the community school strategy, but if you don't feel like that school has the capacity next school year to really, as I said, roll up its sleeves and work with the community school manager to move those ambitious priorities forward, we didn't believe we would see as much success. So, when we talked with Dr. Brown, you know, a lot of his experience in the school community, as well as just the place where that school was at and many of its priorities, seemed like there would not only be the support and the alignment, but the willingness to kind of pick up the bar and run with it, for lack of a better metaphor. So, that's the readiness. Yes.
And then, we, you know, as Erin mentioned, all of our principals showed an interest in community schools. However, it's important to keep in mind that there are multiple factors in helping us foster our decision. And it was hard, it was really tough, such as timing of the initiative, and alignment with current programming and work going on in the school. We didn't want to overwhelm what was going on, and just keeping in mind the workload that our teachers have on their plate as well. And it's important to remember that this is a scale-up approach, that this isn't just one and done, and this is it. So, we have every intention of expanding and beyond two sites as we move forward, I think it's pretty safe to say that. And a meeting with Dr. Brown, it was a great interview, and it was a great interview with all of our principals, that there were some unique features where community schools could really help move the needle. And in Dr. Brown's words, be a step up for King Arts, and that was just something that I noted in his interview. King Arts represents an exciting opportunity to have long-term impact on students, because it has K through A. And that's something for us as the ECSI Council was, wow, it was, the work could be very impactful there. In addition, the community school program at King Arts, it would reach a students, it would reach students from a range of community areas, 48% of whom qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, we looked at schools partnered with YOU. In December, I had all the principals do a partnership cataloging, and we looked at, were those partnerships broad reach for all of our students? Did they have the capacity to address and service more of our students? And were there some gaps in reaching some of our students? And so, now, I'd like to invite Dr. Brown to talk a little bit about his vision for community schools and how he sees it aligning moving forward.
Good evening, everyone. We're excited about this opportunity, so thank you for allowing us this opportunity to just improve what we do at King Arts. As you can see this evening, earlier, we have a very active parent group, very involved. They have great ideas on what we can do to improve the school, the climate, the culture, and how that plays out with academic achievement. We have a lot of work that still needs to be done, and I think having the opportunity to have other stakeholders at the table, to be a part of the team, can definitely transform the existing school into a better school. And so, we are looking forward to that. You know, we have, again, we pull from different areas of the city, Evanston, Skokie, so we have film mates with different backgrounds, different needs, different interests. And it's just nice to be able to, to be able to reach out to them and to have them come to us, looking for support, and looking for resources, looking to be educated on a number of topics. You know, so, some of our school goals, taking a look at how we can make all students feel welcome, taking a look at our transgender youth, taking a look at kids who are eligible for, with special programming, taking a look at, you know, our African-American students and their student gap. So, you know, it's just, they want information just as well, and our teachers want to be trained and receive the support to make sure that all students are successful, all film mates are being, are supported. What I appreciate about the community schools piece, this is not about the haves and the have-nots. You know, you need to know that, yes, 48% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, but also, you know, when you get into certain issues, and resource, families that need resources, for example, with mental health or family counseling, you know, that, that cuts across all economic backgrounds. And so, this is, again, not about the haves and the have-nots. And it's a beauty to see kids with different backgrounds, different parts of Evanston, being able to, you know, work together, learn together, grow socially, socially, emotionally together. That's the beauty in all of this. And so, again, I think we are the ideal, I respect all my colleagues, my country. I ain't throwing in their face, you know, and so I had a better interview or whatever, you know. I ain't throwing in their face, you know, and so I had a better interview or whatever, you know. I didn't do that, but, you know, it's, but it's just, you know, they have some, they have some things that need to be addressed and supported, but I think we are the ideal site for this. And we have the elementary piece, we have a lot of siblings, but to have the elementary piece and the other schools in the district can learn from the work that we're doing, that's going to be a good thing, you know, as we're moving forward. So, you know, again, we are excited. We're, Erin and Izzy will come out tomorrow to speak to our PTA to talk about community schools. They stopped by the school to, at the staff meeting on Thursday to share it with the staff, and the staff had lots of questions, but you can see smiles around the room. You know, they believe in it, they're ready for it, they want it, and whatever we can do to support everyone, you know, that's what we're going to do. And I hope it spills out, not only for the King Arts community, but also spills out into the neighborhood, you know. Yes, we are a magnet school, but we also have folks that are around us that can, would like to be able to stop by the school and say, hey, can you help me in this area? Can you help me fill out an application? Can you help me find some resources to support our family, maybe groceries or just, you know, hey, you know, we'd like to get in touch with some of the local universities around us. But that happens, you know, and folks do stop by, they're not King Arts community, part of the King Arts community, but they do stop by and they're looking for help. And so, you know, there's, there's some opportunities here, you know. And so, yeah.
Well, we're going to pivot a little bit, and we will have questions and discussion at the end, but we're going to talk a little bit about finances of adding King Arts as a community school.
So good evening, everyone. I just want to share my tremendous gratitude to everyone at District 65, Izzy and Kim and Maria in particular, on the working team, and Candice and Suni. This has been a long journey and a very exciting one to reach a point where we are scaling. So on the financing, you see up there, YOU's deep and, you know, very strategic commitment to this. As Paul knows, because he was at our strategic planning retreat in late February, our board unanimously embraced scaling community schools as a continued and long-term priority for YOU. We believe that alongside the child development work we do through our out-of-school time programs, that this kind of community development lens can really systematically address many of the root issues that we know are at the core of the opportunity gap. And so we are thrilled to be partnering with the district. What you see up there is our commitment to the $54,000, and what you see up there is District 65's direct investment through this in King Arts, as well as a similar investment in our SHOOT community school. And what you, what you don't see, but what we've talked a lot about and what is equally or even more incredible, is the deep commitment of the many in-kind resources in terms of keeping the building open and making it possible for this community school to thrive. So we are just absolutely thrilled to be in a place of co-investment and co-ownership and grateful to everyone for making that possible.
And so talk a little bit about the next steps. As Dr. Brown stated, you know, one of our main goals was to engage all of the stakeholders early on. And so we went over on Thursday, and I think when we said, we have an announcement to make, here's the community school, one of the staff members said, are you kidding me? This is great. So I thought, wow, this is going to be some really great work. And the questions were rich, they were, they were deep, they were meaningful. I mean, we had conversations outside of the staff meeting of, wow, we could really see this embedded in the school climate work, everything that we're doing moving forward. So, and that is the way it was presented. We don't want you to see this as another initiative, something that is embedded in the work that we are doing moving forward. So moving forward, we will also be talking to, and just to keep in the back of your mind, it is a two-year implementation process, so our, but our immediate steps include hiring a community schools manager to really work at King Arts and aligning those resources, getting that community school action team together, and really working with the different stakeholders so that we are really sure that they are integrated in the process early on. And then over the summer, just really lay the groundwork, coordinating technology, access to the building, so that the implementation is sustainable and it is successful. We feel that that is something that needs to be done early on in the process. And then talking, moving forward, how do we get professional development done for the staff and the various community members to understand community schools as we go forward? And I would just like to note that as the model continues to expand and my work with the Equity Leadership Team and school climate grows, my role will be to ensure that equity and school climate work is integrated with the new initiative, that we put it in there, that we're just not throwing it on there, that it's integrated, that families are feeling welcome, that we are eliminating barriers to accessing services within our schools, and that we're really speaking that language. And how do we do that? What is the process? What does it look like? So with that said, we're excited to launch in the fall of 2016, with new programming piloted in the spring of 2017 to serve our youth and our families, where programs and services will no longer be a barrier to many of them and making it a true hub of resources for the King Arts community and the community of Evanston. And so we'll talk to, we'll pass it on to Maria so she can talk about the Continuous Improvement Plan as we move forward.
Okay, so the last part of the eagerly awaited Part Two of Community Schools is to talk about the Continuous Improvement Plan. So in collaboration with the Leadership Council, we've put together a draft Continuous Improvement Plan that's in the packet tonight, that illustrates how we plan to monitor implementation and manage the outcomes for the initiative. I just want to call out that Continuous Improvement Plan is an intentional name, which is just to clarify that the goal of this work is to gather evidence of our implementation along the way and track key outcomes related to our theory of action, which means it's not necessarily intended to serve as a formal program evaluation or a comprehensive research study that will document the causal impact on individual students. We simply don't have the budget or bandwidth to do that. Down the road, if we can get, you know, additional partners who might be interested in the research component, we've seen that that, that can apparently happen, that could be something we could look for. But just to sort of state what this is and what it isn't, the objectives for the Continuous Improvement Plan are summarized on the slide up there. We also articulated some guiding principles that I'll just spend a moment on. The first two kind of go hand in hand around balancing the capacity for data collection with program administration and considering the benefits of the data collected in relation to demands on staff or other people to collect. So it can get exciting to think about all the stuff you could collect and measure, but that all comes at a time cost, and that's time that people could otherwise spend working on programming for kids, and instead they sometimes get trapped into entering things into spreadsheets with that valuable time. So we want to be mindful of putting the time and resources in appropriate balance in those efforts. Gathering direct stakeholder voice when possible, so rather than inferring that, you know, people attending means they like your programming, ask them if they like your programming. So try to reach out to the participants and stakeholders involved. Using the information for continuous improvement discussions, so that's our commitment to not just gather a bunch of stuff and produce it if asked on a very rare occasion, but rather to use it as part of an ongoing dialogue about how the work is going. And measuring that, which is directly related to program activities or goals. So again, staying tied to the theory of action and looking at what it is you're setting out to do and not necessarily measuring everything under the sun. So there are two main parts to the Continuous Improvement Plan, milestones and metrics. There we go. The milestones based on the implementation plan that we shared at Part One. We would identify a set of those key activities that indicate whether or not we're implementing according to the model and in a timely manner. So a draft set of those milestones and the timeline at which we would expect them to be complete was attached to the memo. And the metrics, we've identified four categories here of indicators that we will track. Implementation metrics, these are metrics that indicate whether we're faithfully executing the program design. This is about tracking the outputs associated with key program activities, such as meeting attendance or participation in the partner services by students. Stakeholder metrics, these are more near-term indicators of how the program is impacting and being received by our key stakeholders. These would be ratings of the quality, the relevance, the impact of programs and services. This would include key data from the five essentials. There's actually a lot of measures and individual items in that suite of surveys that already tap into things that we're interested in. So again, leveraging existing tools rather than putting out redundant surveys whenever possible. Student outcome metrics, these are longer-term metrics that indicate improvement in key student outcomes, so these are the more ultimate outcomes that we would hope to see around things like student attendance or academic performance. And then school site-specific metrics, these are things that would be tied to the goals set by the CSAT, so what are they going to focus on and what are they aiming to achieve that year? So we would want to allow some site-specific development of goals and indicators to track. And lastly, back to the idea of continuous improvement, making sure that we can have some regular communication. In our strategic plan, Strategy Indicator Scorecard, we have metrics related to progress on our key strategies, and as community schools is one of our key strategies, we would lift some of these metrics and include those on that reporting tool for the district. And then also our regular board updates on community schools are something we continue, and so we'd be able to bring information to the, to the table in that way too, to continue to facilitate regular discussions. So with that, I think we open it up for questions and discussion.
Great. Well, first off, thank you all so much. I know firsthand that this is a labor of love and lots of time and attention, and I think we're all really excited to move forward. Thank you, Katie, for coming and adding yourself to this esteemed group and your expertise. Oh, I'm sorry, Katie Kelly lives next door to me, I keep telling her that, never mind. Kim Kelly, sorry. And with that, I will open it up to questions or comments. Suni, do you want to start?
Yeah, no, I just want to jump in on the thanks to all of the partners from the Leadership Council, Foundation 65, YOU, United Way, and, you know, all of our staff members. I mean, it really was, there was so much, especially with Izzy and Erin and Maria, I think John was involved in all the data gathering to bring to the Leadership Council for us to look at. We had some great conversations and discussions, I mean, I think maybe all of us, I know I certainly came in to the discussions thinking, you know, well, I have my thoughts on how we should expand, but we had some great discussion and, you know, I think it was a really good example of a community collaborative effort. And I am just thrilled that we are at the point where we have selected the next site and we're expanding and we're moving on. So thank you for all, to everybody on the council, in particular the people here who did a lot of the interviews and the legwork, which was a tremendous amount of work, but without making us feel rushed, we were trying to meet some deadlines, so I'm excited, this is going to be great.
Richard?
Mine's just an acknowledgement also, but it is slightly broader because it's an acknowledgement of the administration and the collaborative partnerships and how they have really blossomed over the last couple of years. You know, Maria, I know you do a lot in that area, you're not alone, I think everybody on the exec team plays a role, and certainly Paul, your leadership. And you look at many of our key community partners and how the scope of what they're providing and the reach to the number of students that their programming is impacting has continued to grow year after year. Right after we see the transportation presentation. But a special thanks to YOU because in all of your programming, you have, you've just continued to grow, you know, the whole time I've been following or on the board, and this is just such a great opportunity for us. And even though we're not at the level of sophistication yet to assess the return on our $15,000 investment, I'm going to guess that it is a pretty good price point for us, so thank you.
Tracy?
So I echo whatever I said. I was over at the SHOOT Healthy Markets the other week, and I was so impressed by how efficiently and how enthusiastic all the volunteers were. And I just thought, I know, maybe I'm impatient, but I know you want to develop all your site-specific programs, but things like the Healthy Markets, is it a more, kind of, something you could export more easily and say, this was such a success at SHOOT, it would be something we could more quickly implement again? Is that possible? I just find patience.
Yeah, I think absolutely. I think, you know, a scale-up process and what I know of some of the research about scale-up is that you benefit from the fact that you're not doing it as a pilot anymore. And so I think we're interested in creating an avenue for the work that's flourished at SHOOT to sort of be pushed up and proposed through the collaborative leadership structure at King Arts. Because you're right, we don't, we don't need to be recreating the wheel, I think, if there are partnerships that we've established with YOU and the district that are working well, as long as the site-specific leadership team believes that they would be embraced and there's a need at the site, I absolutely see opportunities to sort of fast-track some stuff that we know is likely to be successful.
And just having conversations with a lot of the principals, seeing where the gaps are, and just planning the summer and working with them in the fall to get some of those existing partnerships in, has just been eye-opening and saying, we could bring this here. So I'm really excited to move the needle with that.
Omar?
I just wanted to say that I'm excited about it, but I'm also, I think it's an opportunity to learn about engaging our parents, especially at the K through 5 level. And so that's the, I know that the other community schools are evolving at the middle school level, so the fact that we can hit parents earlier, I think we can learn some, hopefully some things that we can take and adapt at other schools, even if they aren't community schools. And I know Dr. Brown is happy, so.
Oh, yeah.
Weaver?
Oh, well done. Good luck.
I think the final thing I would want to hold up, and it's something that Dr. Brown had said, as we see, we start to see pieces of our strategic plan come together, because I think the intersection of the climate team work and then using our community schools as a platform for change and for bringing resources to the things that are identified by the climate teams, I mean, it resonates with the conversation that we had last week with some folks from King Arts as they're doing work there already and are identifying needs. How do you then, how do you then address those needs? And so that's one, it's really fertile ground, I think, especially in a, in a school where that, that process is, is pretty mature relative to a lot of our schools, and I think that's really exciting. So looking forward to seeing a lot of good results and any way we can support you in addition to our $15,000. We will be there.
And if I may, let me echo all the kudos and the thanks to YOU and to the staff who've put in an extraordinary amount of time, board members have done this as well. I'll go back to Omar's point because I think it's, it's well-taken and it's right where Jeff was earlier. I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity for King, it's fantastic, and for the community. And it's an opportunity and a challenge for us to take those lessons learned and spread them across the principal colleagues across the schools. And so I think we have to be intentional about that so that what we're learning from King Arts, what we're learning from SHOOT, then can spread to other places within the district.
I blew it. I need to add an acknowledgement for someone who's sitting at the end of the table, Izzy, thank you. You're a huge difference for why our collaborative partnerships are blossoming. And I, I knew that, but I wanted to say that, as well as all the people on the ground who are involved in the day-to-day execution, all the parents, all the teachers, any other staff, I mean, it is a team effort, but you're providing a lot of leadership to all those people too, so thank you for that.
As a community partner, we wholeheartedly agree.
She works for us.
Omar, okay. So I think with that, we'll conclude this, we'll look forward to hearing more about the next phases of implementation. And our final discussion item tonight is our instructional technology update.
A light topic.
A light topic that keeps everyone on their toes. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Are we taking a break?
Okay, we'll do a two-minute break for biological reasons. Okay, we're going to get started. So we can honor Stacy's time. She's got a life. No, you really don't do it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about our, basically to provide a technology update. And tonight's conversation is focused entirely on technology integration. Last summer, the district was charged with taking a look at the use of instructional technology within the district in order to lay the foundation to do a technology plan in the upcoming year. And so memo was submitted to the board on behalf of the district outlining a technology discovery process that we would engage in during this school year. This conversation is to update you on the state of that technology discovery process and to give you a sense of what our next steps are. Just briefly to walk through the kind of overall purposes. The technology discovery process was intended to establish foundational knowledge of how technology was being used to support instruction in the district and to allow us to think in a forward direction about a more ambitious plan for how technology could be used in order to strengthen and transform teaching and learning in the district. Part of the work has included us needing to assess our current inventory, to take a look at how we're using technology, and to think about better ways in which we could go about things like professional development and other tasks. As I go through the slides tonight, I'm going to touch on the work primarily of the Action Team, which is a group that's carrying a good bit of the tech discovery work. Before I dive into that, I want to hit on a few things. The commitments that kind of, that are guiding our work. The commitments that are guiding our work right now are, one, that there should be clear expectations for how technology is integrated into teaching and learning in the district. Those are informed both by the ISTI standards, which are national standards, as well as the Partnership for 21st Century Learning, which is commonly known as the four Cs, which was for collaboration, critical thinking, communication, and creativity. Second, technology should be integrated into the work across the district. Third, it should be driven by all levels of leadership. And so as we're thinking about technology, we're thinking about the interaction of technology with administrators, teachers, and students. Because it can support the work of teachers as well as, for teaching and learning. We need to be thinking about the professional development opportunities that we provide in order to help teachers develop greater capacities and understand greater opportunities for how technology can be used, again, to expand our educational opportunities in the district. Technology is a great, great tool to support potential differentiation for the striving learners in the district and that we have a commitment that first and foremost, we need to see how technology can be used to support that group and support greater success there. And lastly, technology can truly be a vehicle for transforming learning in our district. The diagram that's on this slide talks about, is referred to as the SAMR model and refers to the different ways in which technology can be used to support teaching and learning. Specifically, one of the tasks that we've undertaken recently is an inventory of how technology is being used within our classrooms. We haven't done full analysis on that survey and results yet. However, it is clear in kind of first look that a large amount of our use is focused on substitution right now. And part of our, as we work, as we look forward, is to find ways to create more distribution across the different levels of the SAMR model. Technology, there are perfectly worthy reasons to use technology for substitution, but we also want to look for ways to augment teaching and learning, modify teaching and learning, and redefine teaching and learning. We just went dark. There we are, we came back. All right. So as I mentioned, the team that is really charged with this, well, there are really two teams that are charged with this work. There's the core technology team led by Joe Caravella. And then there's an action team that is a cross-functional team consisting of tech coaches, instructional coaches, a district librarian, members of the tech staff, as well as a member of the ETHS team, and a parent. And so this cross-functional team has been diving into the tasks that we were charged with in the discovery process. Where, you know, the commitments the group took on was to honor work that had been done to date because there was work that had been started prior to us picking up this charge. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't asking people to redo things. So we're drawing on the foundations of what was given to us. We wanted to execute a comprehensive process and we really wanted to capture the value of technology as a tool to enhance teaching and learning. I'm going to walk through briefly the work that the six teams are doing, which are all aligned to the outcomes that were charged to the group through the tech discovery process. The first team is focused on developing technology standards ultimately for students, teachers, and administrators. This team worked with the district instructional technology team this year. And we've developed a draft of student technology standards in grade bands K-2, 3, 5, and 6, 8 that has been shared with the district IT group who helped support it and develop it and then kind of had an opportunity to provide feedback on the final product. And we've shared that team, that document with curriculum and instruction as well because one of the things that we're looking for, our opportunity is to connect these ideas across teams. And in order for us to embed technology standards into teaching and learning, we really have to connect with curriculum and instruction and make sure we're identifying places within the curriculum and supporting teachers and thinking about how to use it in productive ways. So that work is undergoing. In regards to standards for teachers and administrators, that work is going to kind of come along as part of the other team's work because we need to be able to identify professional learning and other things that got in place to build teachers' capacity or administrators' capacity. So that is next steps for that group. Team two is focused on technology use. This team has taken a couple of different data sources. One is a software survey from last year. And then we've conducted a survey of all teachers with the support of principals right towards the end of this year that allows us to get a feel for how technology is being used in the district. And then district IT, the district instructional technology group is also conducting two focus groups at every campus. The combination of these three data points will get pulled together in order to essentially provide a map for each school about technology use, use as instruction, and then some identification of needs. These maps will be shared back to the schools and will be part of our work as we again look forward to the technology plan. Team three is the curriculum and instruction, technology, and audit status. As I mentioned, this group is already connected with team one, who's developed the student standards. And we spent some time really beginning to go through some of the curriculum maps and looking for opportunities for collaboration, opportunities for us to draw really clear connections about where the technology standards can actually embedded in, be embedded into the work that we do. Additionally, this group designed guiding principles for use for technology within curriculum and instruction. And this document is actually a very, it's a nice document that can be blended into the visioning work that is also one of the kind of streams of work that we're moving forward with. But it really does a nice job of calling out the role that technology can play in teaching and learning as well as kind of giving us some things to think about in regards to its role and the, the opportunities that it does provide. Professional development is team four. These guys probably got the toughest deal because I told them, I need you to think about really good, creative, and interesting ways to do professional development without assuming that you're going to get any more time. So they have truly been trying to, you know, they've done a good bit of digging. They've been thinking about, are there ways that we can, that we can connect, one, with ETHS? And that conversation's been going on with Dave and Chan and that team. Two, are there ways in which we can, we can engage other resources that are already out there? You know, when you take a look at things like the Hive Network in Chicago and other places along those lines, there are lots of models for badging and other types of professional development. Are there ways that we can connect and be able to engage with those things? Additionally, we're looking for innovative and creative ways to kind of excite teachers again about opportunities for technology. And so we've had discussions about are there ways to redistribute technology? Are there ways to create innovation grants? And as part of that, teachers are, have an opportunity to take on a new and interesting idea that they then provide professional development to their colleagues and/or open up their classrooms to be able to see how that happens. And so, you know, this has led to, I think, some very interesting and creative thoughts and ideas. And they're going to continue to kind of go down this road of looking at collaborations with other entities, ETHS and beyond, as well as what are some of the other kind of, well, what are the other recommendations that we can build out to create a full plan? And, and I wanted them to really approach it from this idea of kind of limited constraints so that we really could be as creative as possible. When we go to team five, funding and capacity. This group was really charged with defining, one, what is sustainable technology spending? And two, what would be the spend that could actually see us kind of moving towards a different vision for technology? So we spent a good amount of time evaluating and understanding our current technology spending as well as current technology inventory. I feel like we have a very strong foundation there and have started to look forward in regards to like, what roads can we draw? Now clearly, the game has changed on this group even in the three to four months that they've been working. So we've had to reset a few times with this group. But our current plan right now is to really try to price out three different scenarios. And the diagram that's up right now, which is this triangle, really covers, I think, some important ideas around technology spending. There is a base technology spend that we, you know, that is spent no matter what. Even if a type computer does not get into the hands of kids, we're spending about $2.2 million to just run our core infrastructure. You know, and those are things, as you saw in the software subscriptions last meeting, the wiring, the net, the servers, all sorts of things. So base infrastructure cost in this district is $2.2 million. We are then going to build out three different plans, of which we're very creatively referring to as Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C right now. But Plan A is really the minimum. And in some ways, based on the current financial constraints, it's where we are kind of getting pushed at the moment. And that is essentially meeting the basic technology minimum to execute testing requirements. Clearly not the direction that we want to spend a lot of time thinking about, but there's a reality and an aspect to that that we do need to build out. The numbers that are on the right are very rough estimates based on kind of the, you know, some of the general things that we do know about the funding within the district. These will be built out over the next kind of four to six months to really fully understand the plans and the costs. Plan B would be the idea of kind of maintaining something very similar to the current status quo. Right now, we have, you know, as crazy a ratio as it sounds, it's about 0.8 computers for every kid in the district. We know that we have very different distributions at different schools. We've got one-to-one programs, you know, we know that a lot of technology is housed in carts. It would be to kind of maintain the status quo, but we think how we're distributing technology. And then Plan C essentially would be the idea of a new direction, a new vision for technology, which would move us closer to a one-to-one, what would move us to a one-to-one environment, grades five to eight, with the idea of kind of preparing and creating a kind of a smoother diagonal, the ETHS, and looking at the different opportunities that we can engage in in regards to transforming teaching and learning if we know that devices are in kids' hands. There are different ways to get there. Some of it is district technology. Some of it can be supplemented in different ways. We want to develop these three pathways with the understanding that, you know, that then it's an opportunity for us to have this discussion about what direction do we want to go, what would potentially, potential timing be? And in the meantime, we know we have work to do around professional development, capacity building, you know, the role that we're currently, you know, the way in which we're currently using technology. So we're going to build out these different scenarios. And this will ideally, Plan C be merged with vision work around what should the vision be for technology and teaching and learning in this district? And that's a process that we've begun with this team, but again, will continue going forward. The goal for this team, as we kind of look out, and that's, oh, sorry, I have one more team to talk to. Team six is taking a look at pilots, evaluation framework, and policy. There are a number of things that, you know, even in taking on digital promise, and we're looking at turning on student email and District 65 only inside the domain going forward, that we need to make sure that our policies and our practices are in alignment with what we, with the things that we're looking at doing. Additionally, we're building out a process for pilots so that we can do, essentially have a clearer process for defining our learning goals, you know, defining the outcomes that we're seeking, and then have a clear kind of review process. And I've attached the kind of draft of that in, with the memo today. So that's a very kind of fast recap of where we are. Just kind of an outline of the work. The team is, the team actually met last week with an advisory group. We had seven people come in from, we had a representative from Meta Media, the Northwestern Partnership, ETHS, District 65. We shared this work, received some feedback and suggestions for next steps from that group. We're pulling back together some employees, well, our 10-month, summer 12-month in order to capture the suggestions, the next steps. I would see us completing this work by mid to late, by, by late fall. It's kind of our current target. Questions?
Questions? Thank you, Stacy.
And Claudia?
A big thank you. You kind of remind me sort of of a racehorse who just like, you know, you're winning the Preakness and Kentucky Derby and then you're doing this and that. But this is great, so.
I share both analogies, I suppose.
I did have one very specific question. It's not, it wasn't in your slide, but it's on in our report here, which says, review any relevant board policies and AUP?
Acceptable use policy. It's the policy that defines, you know, essentially the way we use technology in the district for students' orgals.
And, and no, I had one more. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to write that hand.
Okay, write that down.
Which is, I think I'm right, when, when, that you're basically starting from the standpoint of technology is to enhance best teaching practices, rather than best teaching practices must involve the use of technology.
That is, that is correct. There's, so, you know, and this was a very good conversation with our district instructional technology team as well. There can be excellent teaching with or without technology. There are opportunities with technology where we can enhance teaching and learning, where we can do things that, you know, with an adult that we would not ordinarily be able to do without the role of technology. And I think I blew right by our district mission statement in the slides too, but we talk about preparing kids for a global society within our mission statement. And there are lots of opportunities through technology where kids have the opportunity to engage and influence that they may not ordinarily have in a global society. So that's an example of where you can really enhance.
And then my final question is, as far as the student standards that you referred to in one of the first slides, that's what we would expect students to know how to do and use? Is that what we're talking about?
So the student, so the interesting part about ISTI's technology standards and the Partnership for 21st Century Learning standards is that when you read them and actually, you know, when you actually read the source documents, they really define good teaching and learning. And they're saying, do the, do the critical thinking, do these things with the technology tools to support that learning. And so we did, we defined the, the student technology standards. We thought it was important to put them in grade bands because of the fact that we need to embed them within content area and within the curriculum and instruction. But essentially, by the end of second, by the end of fifth, by the end of eighth, we would expect that students have had these experiences and are able to do these things.
So, like keyboarding, for example?
So keyboarding is not a standard in itself, but we do have a plan for that.
Okay. That's an important skill.
I know, it definitely is, without a doubt, without a doubt. So, you know, and I think a piece of this is, we've developed these standards. We see the next step, really, this team connecting with professional development as well as curriculum and instruction. Because the expectation is not, we hand this document out and now teachers, you do this. We need to spend the time taking a look at the professional development. We go with this and where do we identify right in our curriculum maps with our curriculum and instruction leads that these are good opportunities? And so our next level of interaction is really with curriculum and instruction leads and coaches because those are great avenues. And when we talked about that front slide of technologies driven by all levels of leadership in the district, the ability to engage school leaders, instructional coaches, you know, people like myself, John, Paul, any of us, to, to use technology and to demonstrate with it supports the growth of it in the district. So our next move is curriculum and instruction and coaches rather than going straight down to, you know, that's straight to teachers to say, this should happen.
Thank you. Great clarity of the goals, the content. Just crisp, thorough, thoughtful. I love the categories, the SAMR model is that, I think you called it. The dollars are interesting, to say the least. And I just want to understand, so right now, this total, which I think is sort of different than the way we've, we typically think about our technology spend because we usually refer to it just as the piece that's in capital. I mean, that's the, the number that we refer to. This 3.1, the Plan A, is really kind of where we are today. Is that right?
The, so today, we would be, so the current, the current spend in this fiscal year for technology all-in, including staff, hardware, software, infrastructure, all of that, this year was 4.4 million.
4.4?
Yep. Next year, we're down, you know, so actually, you know, so we know the implications for next year, but this year was 4.4 million.
Okay. That's good to know. And I am curious, and you don't have to have an answer now, but how we compare to other districts? Obviously, best in practice districts would be interesting to see in terms of a percent of our budget that we're investing in technology, so.
And we've done, we've done some of that comparison work. I don't have any of those results right now. And it does get complicated in the way in results right now, and it does get complicated in the way in which people kind of lump together different expenses within technology.
Right.
The team did send out a survey in the fall to gather that data, but it's difficult to kind of get apples to apples.
I got that. The last thing is just a really tiny thing. In the packet, there was a form, and I think it was geared at teachers. I'm not, I don't remember who.
The, yeah, if it's the last piece, it was, it's a draft idea for kind of ways to submit pilots.
Yes, that's what it was.
And so that would be, that could come from me, that could come from a teacher, that could come from a principal, but it's a way of kind of creating a little bit more-
I liked it, and I think the one thing I just noticed is it was focused, if I recall, on more of the enhancement part of the model than the transformation. I feel like it, it had two of the four categories.
Okay, I'll check on it.
Include that, include those other categories. Otherwise, it's really remarkable work.
I was really, really happy to see that David Chan was on your team. So I think that coordination is great.
You know, they've been, he's been a wonderful partner, and we actually are working on getting the, kind of, our two instructional coaches together with David and his kind of partner, you know? So I think there's a lot of opportunity for at least just expanding that community, which is nice. Suni, do you have anything?
You know, again, this was a great presentation. This is, you know, a really good response to work that I know we have been asking for on how we use technology. And I do like the whole idea of really challenging ourselves to think about transformational uses of technology and pushing, even, you know, with the limited spending money that we have. We do have, you know, fair base of technology in this district, so we should be able to be more inventive with how we use it. And then hopefully, we can, you know, figure out how to get to Plan B, Plan C. That's great, but, you know, we, I like that, thinking about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. The group's been very good at thinking about, you know, what can we do differently to create some, some degree of change and some shift in kind of demand and innovation regardless of our situation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Stacy. We'll look forward to continuing. And again, this is, really is the culmination of some work, will be the culmination of work we've been asking for a long time, so we so appreciate you being here to do it with us and for the team and the parents on the team, parents as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we have upcoming work. We'll try to move through this last and quick, we, quick, we, quick, we. We have Finance Committee Working Board meeting on June 6, which Richard will be chairing, and I guess we'll get the first draft-
Of the what?
Of the budget at that, at that meeting, along with some other things. We have the regular board meeting on June 13, and then committee reports. Do you wanna say anything about Cradle to Career, Paul? Or is there anything?
We'll continue our efforts, not at this late hour.
Okay. We've already talked about Evanston Community Schools Initiative. Jennifer's gone, so we won't do Head Start. Joint 65-202 Committee, I think Tracy's-
Scheduled.
Will be working on scheduling meetings, as, as well as the Park Advisory Board Policy Meeting, next one September.
September.
Okay. Now, moving on to any informal presentations from the public. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Do we do our three minutes?
Yes, so the three minutes would still apply? Heather, if you want.
So I wanted to thank you for your work and your commitment to addressing the achievement and the, as we were, as it was spoken of tonight, the opportunity gap. It's been exciting to, to think of where this path will take us. And I was also glad to hear that we're talking about an equity audit. It makes a lot of sense. It makes me very hopeful. My concern, though, is twofold, and it's based on the fact that these issues are so complex, and we're talking about a 17th school district. It sounds like we're relying on one professional to do this, Corey, who's highly qualified. She's a highly qualified expert, but an audit doesn't feel like a one-person job. And I also don't think she's been hired full-time. And Biz may be part of this to some degree, but she also has her host of responsibilities within the district. And it sounds like the equity leadership teams, I think they're called, are gonna be involved, and while those are highly qualified professionals, they're not professionals in the field of equity. So it made me think, when a large company does an audit, they don't hire a part-time person and tap their existing staff. They hire professionals who are trained in the issues of the audit. So to make this a significant impact, I hope that we, that we can get a team in to do a specific, a school, a specific to-school equity audit. And I know we're addressing so many budget concerns coming up, so it's gonna take some creativity, and I think Jennifer may have said something about a community, you know, looking at this more through a community lens. I don't know what the solution is, but I really feel very strongly that we need to look much more broadly than a part-time person doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple, I'm Alice Berry. Just a couple of reactions to the equity statement as I was reading it. I really thought, I was expecting this statement to be about race, and yet there's a lot of stuff in here that's not about race. And it seems, as I read through this, as if the word "race" just keeps getting stepped as, you know, as if there's kind of fancy footwork to avoid the word. I understand it's an uncomfortable word. I understand it's an uncomfortable concept that we have to think about racism in Evanston, but I'm pretty sure that we do, if, if we have any hope of addressing the achievement gap. Based on everything that I've heard at previous meetings since December, these other kinds of equity weren't really, they either weren't a major concern in the way that race was, or there are laws in place to take care of it, and that what I thought this statement really needed to talk about was just race. One, one example is demographic diversity is, or the, what is it, the, the word, yeah, the demographic diversity of our student body. Why doesn't that say racial diversity? I don't, I don't understand that. And the other, the other thing that really struck me was talking about providing training opportunities. Why, why is diversity training not being required as it is, I believe, in 202? I believe every new staff member at 202 has to undergo diversity training. And from what I know of child development, which isn't a whole lot, but I would think you would want teachers with diversity perspectives reaching kids at the earliest possible age, not waiting until high school. My own experience of doing diversity trainings is that it, it opened my eyes, and I see things very differently. The Pacific Education Group is coming to this area in mid-June, running trainings. To be honest, I was kind of hoping I would hear that a bunch of folks on the board were gonna, were gonna attend. It's a two-day training. I think it's June 17th and 18th, or 16th and 17th, I'm not sure. It's called Beyond Diversity. I believe it's what every 202 person hired has to, has to go through, and I encourage you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no one else to speak? I will, there's no more business to come before this meeting, correct?
Correct.
I will call us adjourned at 10:44 PM. Thank you.